Call the meeting to order, please. This is a Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, September 5th, 2019. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Sal.
Here.
Trustee Eads.
Here.
Trustee Adams.
Here.
Trustee Gieser.
Here.
Trustee Hammond.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney.
Here.
Also President Village Clerk Haley.
Thank you very much. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our full house this evening. Thank all of you for coming tonight and thank you for those of you who are watching at home. If you are here and you would like to address the board, I'd ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. You're welcome to make comment during public comment or if you want to wait till we get to a particular agenda item, which I suspect is why many of you are here, you're also welcome to do that. So it's entirely up to you. So first up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board at this point? No? Moving on, we'll go to the reports of village jobs. Does I see a hand? Oh, yes, please, please, ma'am.
I was going to wait.
Oh, that's fine. You can wait if you wish. Okay. Next up is the... Please.
My name is John Rico. We live at 471 Kent Road in Riverside. I'd like to make some comments on the cannabis dispensary issue that's currently at hand.
Can everybody hear me?
So, look, I want to preface my comments by acknowledging the obvious that we're all friends and neighbors and social acquaintances here. As I look around the room, I don't know all of you, I know many of you. Wendell, our children went to preschool together. Ben, I've enjoyed our conversations socially at parties. Ed, I believe our firm and your firm, Paulson LA, does a lot of work together. And Kristen, my wife Amy, is in a book club with you. Furthermore, if you go down the economic development, two of the key members of that, Jack Buscio and Suzie Cale, are both friends of ours as well. In fact, Suzie lives like two blocks away. So I say all my comments with, you know, a degree of respect, both for your time and effort, as well as the amount of intellect and experience that's gone into this whole debate. I just want to kind of talk to three issues that I've seen on social media, which is about the worst place to have this discussion. You know, one is kind of safety versus control that I think we're grappling with. Two, the revenue that's available and potentially available to the community. And then three, you know, are we missing an opportunity by not going after this today? Right? And so maybe just quickly, and I know other people may want to have other things to add. The safety control, I think that's kind of a push, right? The argument that we would do a better job of controlling and ensuring the safety and limiting this product to minors better than our neighbors, I think is not giving our neighbors, Berwyn, North Riverside, Brookfield, enough credit. And no disrespect to our Chief Weitzel, but I mean, I think that's, I think they're highly competent. And so I don't know that we can make that argument, we do a better job than they will. The revenue obviously is something that has driven a lot of this on the national stage. I think, I don't know what the number is, the number of states that have legalized this, but it's large and growing, right? 10, 15, 20, and growing. Obviously, we all know it's still legal at the federal level. I'd like to believe, although I don't know if it's the case, that the reason it's being legalized state level is simply for the reasons that we're talking about now is revenue. The reasons it's illegal at the federal level, I don't know. I suspect it has to do with things like acceptance, stigma, and health issues, which there's a lot of comparisons of marijuana to alcohol or opioids. I don't know that that's necessarily a good thing or a bad thing. It's just, I think we have to recognize it's still legal at the federal level. But when you look at kind of what the economic issue or opportunity is, I don't have the minutes from the last economic development meeting, but I saw a paper that kind of laid out an illustrative example. And the example they gave was $2 million of revenue taxed at 5% to 6%, three of which is available under this new law. And that would result, obviously, in a, what, $50,000 to $100,000 opportunity, which would be a material percentage of our sales tax revenue available today. I think you have to stop for a minute and say, hold on, are those inputs right? Is $2 million the right number? That data doesn't exist. We don't know. I work for a valuation firm stout. We do about 3,000-plus valuations a year. If anybody would have access to this data, we would. We, there's a little bit of conflict. We have a large and growing valuation practice in cannabis, including dispensaries. And I can tell you that that data does not exist, that $2 million is very much up in the air. We know for a fact, based on our empirical evidence, that a very large dispensary, such as one operating in Las Vegas, could do as much as $10 or $20 million worth of revenue a year. However, that's like the size of Kmart. I mean, literally, that's the size of the dispensary that we're aware of, and there's others, too. I will also say that our experience, again, may not be representative. Typically, these dispensaries are not located adjacent to a neighborhood. Our experience, again, other people may have different, is they're located in light industrial or heavy commercial or older commercial, not within, you know, 50, 100, 150 feet of a middle-class neighborhood. And then also, I don't know if this is the case, I think when you look at the, our ability to charge the 3%, I will just point to one data point, and that's the TIF that Berwyn offered Tony's Finer Foods to move across the street. Again, don't know, I suspect that if we got into that type of situation, I don't know what Berwyn's doing. I strongly suspect that there would be a price war and would drive it, competition would drive it down. Again, I could be totally wrong, right? Maybe everybody in charland area is going to offer, is going to hold their feet at 3%. I wouldn't bet on it, though, at least based on past experience. And then the last, you know, the last thing is, was my last point? But I just, I urge, oh, an opportunity. Look, I get it, right? 1,500 feet, my understanding is it's 1,500 feet legalize the boundary between, you know, one dispensary and another. And the issue is if we don't act now, as of the first, that Berwyn could then put one across the street, you know, in Harlem, and then preclude that radius, half-mile radius, quarter-mile radius. And so we'd be out of line. And look, I get that, too. But I think we have to recognize that we are all friends and neighbors here and that there's at least a contingent, I don't know how large, of neighbors that are vehemently opposed to this. And so I urge your caution to go against that, and I urge you caution to at least consider that before you make the decision on what to do with the dispensary. That's it. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else at this point? If you want to, sure. Sure. But I, you know, let me just initial, we have a lot of people here. I don't know how many people are going to want to talk tonight. The night eventually does end, so I would just ask that you do your best to keep your comments as succinct as possible. Okay? Please, ma'am.
My name is Theresa Ann Sheldon, and I've grown up in Riverside. I have supported this town. I love this town. It has a certain tranquility. It wants to make you feel at peace. You drive into town, it's calming. Wonderful town. I served on the recreation board.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. Are you guys getting feedback back there? I don't know if the Riverside TV could tone that down back there. Are you guys hearing this, too? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, I just wanted to hear you.
That's all right. Okay. I served on the recreation board in Riverside with Bill Earl for six years. I was Secretary of the Riverside Swim Club for a number of years. I have taught things through the recreation board. I've taught cross-country skiing. I've taught exercise classes. I've taught ice skating classes. I care about this town, and I get the feeling that we're on the brink of, and I apologize for a late awareness on this because I was out of town and back and forth, so I didn't really notice this until I picked up the Rivers, the landmark yesterday morning, and I almost croaked when I read it. Really. Certain things need to be considered here. And one gentleman here spoke about friendships, and this is a town of friendships. We bond. We're there to help one another all the time. Now, the issue of cannabis and dispensaries, I hear plurality in this, too. Are we speaking of one dispensary in a location adjacent to no parking? Bird Road and Berkeley Road? If you live there, and I hope some of you are here from there, would all the rest of us want to have our street, the parking lot, for a dispensary that is going to be open from 9:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night? Where do my friends go? What do my children see? We don't, do we need this money? It's all about money. Let us think about what we have here, which is intangible. This is a marvelously unique community. We don't need this in this town. It will be, mark my words, a Pandora's Box. My father was a police officer in this town for 28 years. His brother Charlie became the chief of police. The police, it sounds to me like we've got to have somebody on guard there all the time. You can't smell it, you can't do this, you can't do that. Where are our policemen supposed to be? Please, please, think wisely about this. I have read in the paper, first of all, Naperville, in the Tribune today, they have said no. You know how big Naperville is? The whole town, no. Brookfield is getting feedback from the people, they want to know if you want this or not. What do you do with something like this?
Say no.
Yes, say no. Brookfield...
We're smarter if we have better ideas for making money than this.
We, money cannot direct peace. Money does not count for everything. It just gets accumulated and spent. We're Riversideers, this is our town. Let's protect it because this will be a Pandora's Box. Mark my words. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else at this point?
Yes.
This is the person.
Hi there. I'm Melinda Lehman. I live at 266 Lionell. I didn't go to preschool with anyone, but I've been here 28 years, so (laugh) I'm a long-time Riverside-er. I also happen to work with people in the mental health and addiction treatment fields. And this makes me privy to scientific research on marijuana as it relates to its addiction ability, the side effects of it, and its effects on the community. And I will tell you right now, roundly throughout mental health and addiction treatment, the professionals in that field, almost all unanimously oppose making marijuana easier to access. Some of the reasons why can be found on a site called Learn About SAM, S-A-M.org. It is a national, nonpartisan site started by former Congressman Patrick Kennedy and former drug czar Kevin Sabat, Dr. Sabat and Patrick Kennedy, and I know and have spoken with them both, I've seen them speak on this topic. They have the utmost of ethical professionalism. And the data on their site is true. There's a lot of rhetoric out there right now. Personally, I feel that big tobacco has nothing on the big pot lobby right now. And it's coming down to they're selling out our communities for money. Some of the facts. Today's marijuana is up to 30 times stronger than what we probably knew in college. That was 3% to 5% THC. Today's marijuana is up to 99% pure THC. It comes with more side effects. It was illegal before because it's harmful. And that harm doesn't go away just because we put a medical label on it. Furthermore, in states that have had medical marijuana for a while, it's widely known that it's a wink-wink way to get your recreational drugs. You go into it, and I've heard this story from Kevin Sabat, he went to a dispensary in Colorado. He said, "What's the difference between the two?" And they said, "Well, if we get you a prescription, you can get 20% off." And he said, "Well, I'm a perfectly fine, middle-aged man." The guy goes, "Do you ever have a headache? Do you ever have back pain or a sleepless night? All those qualify. I can get a physician in here right now and for $25, he'll write you a script." So it's wink-wink recreational marijuana. The marijuana effects last longer than alcohol, and they'll be harder for our police to discern. You can't just do smell breath, you know, and they can last in your system for up to three to five days, depending on how much you're taking. And so it all comes down to increased availability contributes to significant community costs that I don't think we want Riverside to bear. ER visits are going to go up. They rose dramatically in Colorado and Washington. Gummy bears left on a counter have poisoned children, infants as young as nine months, pets. The secondhand smoke issues can cause asthma attacks, and there can be total with people who don't understand how much they're taking. For instance, a chocolate bar in Colorado, the recommended dose is one square. Well, who eats one square of a chocolate bar? So they end up in the ER with, you know, psychotic breaks and with, you know, serious side effects. Furthermore, in Colorado and Washington, car crashes have grown way up. Driving while high doubles or triples your risk of a car crash. And most people, by the way, don't substitute marijuana for alcohol, they add it together, which increases their impairment. So, car crashes in Colorado, where's my notes here? Have seen, oh, I'm sorry, traffic fatalities due to a stoned driver are up in Colorado 48%. I don't think we want that here.[1056.91][1056.91](Applause) I have one more point about its use in children. There are no, by the way, medical institutions that have come out for widespread availability of marijuana, quite the opposite. The American Society of Addiction Medicine disproves of medicine being dispensed by non-medical professionals, which is usually a high school dropout in a storefront down on Harlem Avenue. We don't do that with insulin users, you know. And marijuana is actually available in pill form if you have nausea from cancer, if you have other diseases, and nobody uses it. So back to that wink-wink way of getting a recreational high. ASAM also disproves of a medicine that is not proven in any sort of, not provided in any sort of a regulated dose. Again, we wouldn't do that with insulin. Take what you think you need. And they reject a process where a state ballot initiatives approve marijuana as medicine because the people approving it as medicine aren't qualified to make such a decision. The American Academy of Pediatrics, by the way, says any change in the legal status of marijuana, even if it is limited to adults, could affect the prevalence of use among adolescents. Let's be clear, tobacco was not aimed at adults, it's always aimed at the kids because that's your future market. I have great pictures of billboards that you can see in Colorado and California and other places, making marijuana look like a fun joyride. I don't think we want our children going in that route because the human brain doesn't stop growing until you're mid-20s, 25, 26 years old. Those people are legal to do this. But there are scientific studies that say, in a dose-related way, that heavy marijuana use is more likely to be unemployed, not finished school, on welfare, single, living at home, and it can reduce the IQ four to nine points. Not to mention an increase in mental health issues that are proven as well, that's more likely to be psychotic breaks, psychosis, depression, et cetera. So, that's...
And now it's going to court you when this goes.
Ma'am, please. One, the person up here can talk, please.
I agree. So I just want to say, to think seriously about doing no harm when you come to this and maybe delay the vote on this to take a look at former Congressman Kennedy's and Dr. Sabat's statistics. A lot of the information about marijuana is difficult to find on the web, and that's by design. The marijuana halabi, I've heard, according to Dr. Sabat, has bought up a lot of the search terms so that now you can't find the National Institute of Health study on side effects until page 17 of Google. So, it's a complex issue, maybe delay until you do a little more research, but I myself say we don't need this in Riverside, and I hope you agree.[1252.04][1252.04](Applause)
Okay, before we continue, though, let's just, I just want to make one, we can't give everyone that's here tonight 10 minutes. You know, we're going to be here up to 2:00 in the morning. And let's please try to focus on what the issue is before the board tonight, which is not legalization of marijuana. The state has made that determination. What we're talking about is whether or not we should have an adult-use cannabis retail establishment in Riverside. So I would ask you to please limit your comments to that. Please, I believe you were, actually, ma'am, I believe you were next. You, weren't you next? You going to have her go? Okay.
My name is Erica Hartford. I live at 53 Bird Road here in Riverside. I attended the zoning commission meeting on this subject. I learned about that meeting and this issue about a day before that meeting was held and let some of my neighbors know. I think a lot of people in Riverside right now are just now learning that this issue is on the table. There may have been some efforts by the board to get that word out, but it did not get out to many, many people. I think if you asked people in this room, how many people actually knew that you were voting on this tonight before a week or so ago, it would be very, very few people. We're all very busy professionals. We have little kids. We count our free time in minutes, three minutes here, two minutes there, to educate ourselves about what's going on in our village, and it's a village that we're very proud of. And we have been scrambling to get educated, to not make knee-jerk decisions, to be informed. And the perception is this process has been extremely unfair, that it has not been designed to get village input. A statement that we are all, we all can't have 10 minutes to talk to you about our feelings on this issue is frankly indicative of the problems with the process so far.[1391.13][1391.13](Applause) This is our livelihoods, this is our families. It deserves a lot more than 10 minutes. It deserves to be opted out now and held a referendum for the village to vote and decide.[1412.04][1412.04](Applause) There is no need to rush. The, many villages are opting out so they can give adequate consideration to a very complex issue and hear from their residents on what they want for their town and their community. LaGrange Park has opted out, Naperville opted out and said they'll have a referendum. Other communities in Illinois are taking a thoughtful approach. Also, if you look at states where cannabis, commercial cannabis has been legal for some time, like Colorado or California, a majority of the municipalities in those states have opted out from allowing commercial cannabis in their vicinities. It is a distinction between voting to allow medical use in a state and having commercial cannabis located in your particular town, around your particular family, as a business operation. And that's because there are a lot of specific considerations about whether you want to do that. And high-pressure tactics, you know, decide now, we can't wait, that's something that we expect from late-night telecommercials, but not from our Board of Trustees.[1495.54][1495.54](Applause) I agree with the woman who spoke earlier, who talked about her time that she's lived in this community. This is a decision that is going to impact the community across the board. I do believe that it is opening a Pandora's Box of issues that have not adequately been considered and that it is going to tarnish the legacy of the board members who are sitting in front of us here tonight in terms of the impact on our community. I want to talk about some of the things from all the research that I've done that I think have not been given consideration. And I will say, one of the things, when I spoke to the zoning commission, one of the things I started with, because I think it's so important, is the revitalization that the community has already had along the northeast corridor and eastern entrance into Riverside. Riverside has supported cleaning up and painting the building, we're shining smiles, family dentistry has entered into, where there's a nail salon, they've, you know, supported getting rid of the sort of dry cleaner space and opening it up. There has been a lot of impact, has made that like a more developed and welcoming area. And I really urge Riverside to focus on ideas in economic development like that, which is consistent with our community, consistent with our brand, which is one of the reasons that so many families have moved and invested in this community. And I want to talk about the Bird Berkeley Road for a moment, area, because that is a particular area that will be impacted by what the village has proposed. And looking at the notes, it appears that the village was considering adopting a 1,000-foot proximity restriction from schools, which is consistent with what is prohibited for medical use facilities, and 500 feet less than what was recommended by the Illinois Municipal League in their nonpartisan proposals for municipalities in order to address the uncertainties of legalized cannabis commercial operations. Riverside's proposed 500 feet, and looking at the record, it appears it did so because someone pointed out, you're going to knock out part of the commercial corridor on Harlem if you have a 1,000-foot buffer. That's not considering what's best for our children, that's not considering what's best for our families, that's not considering what's best for that neighborhood. That's simply trying to prioritize a financial incentive over everything else, and it is deeply, deeply misguided. In fact, when I urged the zoning commission to adopt 1,000-foot buffer if they were going to make a proposal from schools and libraries, that wasn't addressed. But there are, even the city of Chicago has a 500-foot buffer from any facility that is used primarily by children for recreation, or used by children for recreational educational purposes, which would include libraries, which would include parks, which would include playgrounds, which would include a lot of other things. So, we all moved, many of us moved here from the city, thinking we were moving into a community that was going to be more respectful and more protective and more safe and more developed of a community feel for our families, only to find out that Chicago is actually putting in stronger buffers than what Riverside is proposing. My son's coach has a saying, he says, "Be your best." Not someone else's, don't worry what someone else is doing. Be your best. This is not the best that Riverside can do. We are not being our best in this conversation in only allowing people to come with their children, who some have had dinner or some haven't, to have five or 10 minutes to talk to you about this. Opt out, have a referendum, give the community an opportunity to talk about this. Now, I want to talk about a few things because I've heard them and I think it's important that they're brought up. There are totally hazy revenue projections, but let's say it's $100,000, because that's what's in one of the calculations that the other gentleman mentioned. There are also significant costs to legal having a commercial cannabis operation in your community. These can be increases to village insurance and village personnel costs. I understand that nothing has been allocated for additional policing. I think that seems reckless, given the requirements that will be imposed to ensure compliance with a... Free speech laws, other laws, you know, the fact that you're dealing with a product that is illegal on the federal level. All of these things lead to additional lawsuits. And one lawsuit, and I, you know, I'll be, I'll tell you, I used to work for an organization that effectively policed free speech laws, and it would look at municipality laws when a new law was passed, and it would say, "That's a problem," and go and sue that municipality. And one of those was the city of Chicago. It is hundreds of thousands of dollars, and these laws are on their radar. And municipalities that have these laws in place are going, are being sued now, and are going to continue to be sued. It's a hundred thousand dollars, but what's it cost? At what cost? That can go up, and pun intended, in a puff of smoke in no time. I've also heard a discussion about, well, commercial cannabis is just like packaged liquor or other products. And that was one of the main talking points at the zoning commission, from the members of the zoning commission. And, you know, I listened to that, and I do want to say, it's not. It is nothing like other products. And here's the reason why. It's still a criminal substance on the federal level. It's not regulated by the FDA. There is a ton of legal uncertainty around this product and how to regulate it. There are massive unknowns in terms of the health risk, because you can't spend federal dollars largely to research this issue. And so, the research hasn't been put in place. There are limited business licenses, which is going to mean increased excessive traffic around any location that is licensed. That's going to have an outsized impact on the community in which it's located in. There have been increased accidental poisonings, has been discussed. There is no standard method of testing for drugged driving, and that is not a comment on our police department, which is an amazing police department. I mean, one of the most aggressive within Cook County, and we are very fortunate to have that police department. But this is just a fact. It's a cash business, which leaves it up to having large sums of money at its location, which again, leads to the conclusion that there is going to have to be additional resources committed to that location. And these businesses are largely under insurance, because insurance companies don't want to insure them, because there are so many unknowns. And so, when something goes wrong with a business that is not in compliance, which is not following enforcement, that comes back to the village to cover those costs. This is a fool's errand, frankly. And to say that we're concerned, because if we don't do this, another community will.
Go ahead.
That is just looking at this from a perspective of, everybody else is doing it, Washington and I. I tell my kids, that's not a valid argument. And it is not a valid argument.
Everyone's jumping off a bridge. Are you going to jump off a bridge?
That's right. You know, we need to think about what kind of community we are creating here, and what we are building towards going forward. The economic development in this community has been excellent so far. We have had a lot of young community, young families move here, who used to say, "I'm going to go to Oak Park," or "I'm going to go to a different community." And they come now to Riverside, because it is unique, because it is safe, because it is community-oriented, and there is a sense of neighbors helping neighbors on a daily basis. And we need to preserve that. This doesn't preserve that. We need to think about that. Postpone, opt out, have a referendum.
Hi. I'm Jill Basick. I live in the First Division on Millbridge Road. I've emailed several of you, and your responses back to me, I appreciate. We can go on with data and research and opinions all night. I have one, just one request. Just say no. Used to be the DARA program? Just say no. I don't think you're going to do that, so I have three requests. First, postpone it, table it, wait. Lots and lots of communities are waiting. Berwin's waiting, Brookfield's waiting. Naperville already said no, they were going to wait. I have a whole list of places. Hold, or discuss it, study it, talk to these communities, talk to the ones that have opted out, talk to the ones that, maybe in January or February, that have a dispensary, see what their issues are, see if it's working. Secondly, wholesome community meetings, neighborhood meetings, we'll all help you. I canvassed the First Division last week, and I can tell you, no, 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 we want to get, they want their meeting, and I appreciate that. I've talked to friends around town. Not one of the people I spoke to, not one, knew about this. I know what some of you have said, "Well, it's on the TV, it's on our website, it's in the newspaper." There are a lot of people in this community that don't, don't do those things. They aren't savvy on the computer or watch TV. You need to get this word out. You did it for gambling. I think this is a little more serious. I think the community has the right and deserves the right to be informed on this. Take your time. I really don't think, I mean, it's obvious, places around the state are not jumping on this. There are a lot of hesitations, a lot of leery, a lot of vague things going on. Naperville voted it down. They already have medical. They voted it down because it doesn't fit their brand, I think you called it, of a neighborhood community, of a family community, which is interesting to me that they can separate the medical from the, "Let's have fun with it." After you've had these meetings, and after we've had everyone informed as much as we can, hold a referendum in the spring. Let us decide. I know you represent us, and there are many things that you can do in here for us, to help the community, to help Riverside, but this is something that will affect every one of us, whether we live in the First Division or over on that corridor. I agree, I'm not going to, no, I'm not going to state my opinion. I think that we just need to listen to, listen to citizens. Let them decide this spring. If they vote yes, then you can proceed. If they vote no, you've been given a message, and maybe some of us that are fired up can help you come up with some other unique new ideas to bring some more business into Riverside, and to keep it the village and the park. I appreciate your commitment and your dedication to being a board member. I know it's not easy. Thank you very much, and thank you for letting me speak.
You're going to have to step up there. They're going to-
We're going to tag team.
My name is Helen Lee. I live on Blythe Road.
And I'm Megan Hizing. I live on Selbourn.
We wrote a letter to the, to the board, and thank you for those who responded back. We just wanted to represent, we're both physicians, and we are also involved in clinical trials, research, the type of research that is often quoted, combing large databases to look for adverse events related to big policy experiments such as this. And we've spent the last week looking through that from the scientific perspective, to try to, to be sort of, as scientists, you always try to maintain a sense of equipoise, in the sense that you may have your personal biases, but you can't let that influence what you scientifically conclude. And so, for us, this was an interesting exercise of, regardless of how we feel about whatever this policy is, what does the science and what does the evidence show, and what can we conclude, and how can we apply that to this situation in our home? A lot of this, actually, a lot of these points were very openly already discussed by the previous speakers. And so, I think, for me, what it comes down to is, what do we gain by passing this now versus what do we lose? If we, if we put a referendum on this, to allow the community to have some more thoughtful discourse such as this, where we have opposing views, and really come to a point where people are comfortable with whatever the decision is, to the best of our ability, we may lose out on some revenues for a year. If we pass something through, and at a point where the community doesn't feel at ease, what do we lose? A sense of community, a sense of trust, a sense of collaborative spirit? And this is a decision that, if made too quickly, you can never take back. Right? And I think it's, what's being, sort of simmering underneath is this fear and anxiety that we don't know what's going to happen. And I think some of the other communities are also wondering the same thing. What if we waited and saw what other communities around the state have done, and what their experiences have been, from civil engineering, from traffic, from, you know, police safety, from motor vehicle accidents, from local hospitalizations and emergency department visits? I spent the last week talking to colleagues in emergency medicine, of someone who's an international leader in toxicology, to sort of pick their brains, because this is what they do clinically, and it is what they study internationally. I've talked to pediatricians, pain physicians, part of that world. And overall, it's a sense of, well, we don't really know. People have talked about, this is a, this is a drug, and there are benefits to certain individuals, and I'm not going to deny that. There are harms. It is like alcohol, it is like nicotine. People say that it is not addictive. That is true and false. It is not physically addictive. You don't have withdrawal symptoms like you do with alcoholism or heroin withdrawal. It is completely psychologically addictive, and there are very real impacts on children in their developing brains. And someone touched upon, we've seen data of MRIs of children, and how that changes the structure of your brain and how it develops. It changes how your neurotransmitters communicate with each other. It changes how you, on a functional level, your visual, your neurocognitive outcomes. So, that's all sort of public, healthy stuff, and I'm not sure if that's really the crux of this conversation right here. The conversation right here seems to be very pragmatic. How do we vote on this? How do we decide? And how do we think through the pros and the cons, the benefits, and sort of the unintended consequences of that? And it really just seems like the community is saying, what is the harm in waiting and doing some more careful reflection, and maybe waiting to see how other communities fare, and what their experiences have been like? It's a decision we can't take back. It's a decision that if we wait for a period of time, all we lose is potential revenue. And I don't feel like anyone is going to feel badly about the potential revenue that they lost, if they have peace of mind.
Actually, in light of time, I'm not going to say anymore, because I feel like most of our, you guys have our references that we gave you, and we really did try to be objective, I feel, about it. But if you have any questions, we'd be happy to go through those references.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. My name is Anne Marie Vietti. I grew up here in Riverside, with some of you here tonight, and played in the homes of some also that are here tonight as well. And I decided to come back to Riverside to raise my family here. Children are here with me as well. I would also appeal to the board to think twice about moving forward with this without doing a referendum. A decision of this level of importance deserves to allow the people of Riverside to weigh in and vote. I feel that this is extremely detrimental to the brand that Riverside has. We have fought so hard to maintain our historical legacy, and we've worked to, we don't allow Starbucks in Riverside, but we're going to allow marijuana dispensary? This just seems totally inconsistent. And I agree with some of the former commentators earlier, that if we were willing to put slot machines to a vote, something of this nature absolutely deserves the referendum and the voice of the people within Riverside. I'm also concerned with the speed at which all this information is being presented. The minutes to the Economic Committee meeting and video were not available on the website, though that was portrayed to me via email. And I watched some of the videos where a prior commentator was dismissed to say that this wasn't a forum for the discussion. So, once again, I didn't come with anything prepared, but I really would urge you that this will be your legacy, of bringing this to Riverside, and to think that there won't be a secondary element that follows alongside of it, that potentially is illegal in nature, I think is, what would be the word to use here? Understated at best. When the gentlemen's clubs opened up along Goose Island, along North Avenue, there was all kinds of prostitutes that followed alongside of it. And it took the Chicago Police decades to move them out. And if we think that criminal drug dealers are not going to understand that there is a market to be able to sell at lower prices, within shouting distance of this operation, I think that that's a very naive consideration. And to bring this within such close proximity, not only to Riverside, but to the Berwin Library, to, we have a civic responsibility to protect our neighbors' children as well. I just feel like it's very irresponsible, and I would beg you to consider whether or not today is the right moment to do this, and to move forward with a referendum for the people to decide this within Riverside. Thank you.
Just, just, just one little factual point. We don't not allow Starbucks here. In fact, several years back, we almost, we actually were getting ready to have a Starbucks at the location at Berkeley in Harlem, and the only reason we didn't is that Starbucks itself stopped building restaurants. So, there is no prohibition against Starbucks in Riverside. Yes, sir, please.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Jack Wyatt. I reside at 165 Bartram Road. Long-term resident of the village, have served the village in the past for twenty or twenty-five years, and had the privilege of sitting in the very seats that you sit in. I understand the importance of this. I've been following this quietly in the background, and I, I'm not going to rehash everything that a lot of people have said here, but I am really concerned that we are considering something that I have heard no compelling reason that outweighs the problems that we have described here, that would want to allow this process into the village. Whether we want to, I don't have all the facts and figures on drug problems and everything, but the fact of the matter is that drugs are a problem, not just in our community, because they are, they're a problem here, opioids, whatever. But, you know, our state, for some reason, figures the only way that they can work their way out of the problems that have been created over a long period of time, is to create sin taxes. Let's, let's make something legal that wasn't legal before. Let's tax it. How is that, how is that improving the situation? We're dodging the question on some of the other issues that they need. So, without, you know, further elaboration on that, I just strongly recommend that the trustees consider the importance of this decision to the village, and, and the benefits that could come, as well as the problems that could come with it. And I have to believe, having sat in the same seats that you have sat before, that, you know, it's, it's a hard decision, because you want to, you're looking for every way to solve the village's problems, every way that you possibly can. But there are some things that are right, and there are some things that are wrong, and this is wrong. Opt out, certainly delay if you don't want to opt out, but don't approve this tonight. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Carrie Kogle. I live on Bird Road. And first, I want to recognize my Bird and Berkeley Road neighbors. Two of our houses caught fire today, which was very ironic, considering the discussion that is happening, but we all showed up, and we're all here. And I think it really showed our community. Forty-three children were on the street witnessing the house fires, and I'm very passionate about not having this in the community. I bought a condo in Chicago and had a baby, and when I closed, there was a shooting on my corner. And I moved here for safety, and for the fact that I still work downtown, but I can come into a community and see a deer and a fox, and feel like I'm part of something. I grew up in Oak Park, and I'm one of the-
And I, I have to believe, having sat in the same seats that you have sat before, that, you know, it, it's, it's a hard decision because you want to, you're, you're looking for every way to solve the village's problems, every way that you possibly can. But there are some things that are right and there are some things that are wrong, and this is wrong. Opt out, certainly delay if you don't want to opt out, but don't approve this tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Kogle. I live on Bird Road. And first, I want to recognize my Bird and Berkeley Road neighbors. Two of our houses caught fire today, which was very ironic considering the discussion that is happening, but we all showed up and we're all here. And I think it really showed our community. Forty-three children were on the street witnessing the house fires, and I'm very passionate about not having this in the community. I bought a condo in Chicago and had a baby, and when I closed, there was a shooting on my corner. And I moved here for safety and for the fact that I still work downtown, but I can come into a community and see a deer and a fox and feel like I'm part of something. I grew up in Oak Park, and I'm one of the few mixed-race families in this community. My husband is African-American and I'm raising a biracial daughter. I could have moved to Oak Park. I chose Riverside. And I'm so against this. And I would encourage you to come to our block party on Saturday and see the forty-three people, forty-three children that live on these streets and not pass this. And I completely agree that it needs to go to a referendum, just like slot machines did, because I think a lot of people are too scared to come to this meeting and to speak up and have their voice, but they very much will vote in private. And the fact that that might not be able to happen, I don't agree with. And so I vote, I encourage you to say no and to put it to a referendum. Thank you.
I've been a resident of Riverside for 36 years. I raised family here, chose Riverside because it was a safe haven in a chaotic world. And I always valued the morals and values that were shown by the families here and the support that they gave each other as neighbors. And living on North Gate Road, it's an entry into Riverside. I've seen a lot of crime, people off of 26th Street coming in and making, you know, I've had crime, I've had shootings across the street from my house. I've had people trying to break into my house because it's a quick exit. The same thing would happen with Harlem Avenue. We have an obligation as citizens, U.S. trustees, members of the society to live by morals and values that are the type that we want our children to live by. Just because the law is passed doesn't mean it's a good law. There are a lot of laws that are passed that we don't agree with, but everybody just jumps on the bandwagon. Revenue is important, but there are other ways to, to run a business, which is running a community, and tighten your budgets and look for other means of revenue, not crime. It will bring crime. We, we don't need any more than what we have already. The police department here is taxed as it is, and I just think we have a social moral obligation with Christian values in mind to, to raise the children in this community to become upstanding citizens and not get them involved with drug use or infiltrated by criminals in this area. So I agree that there should be a referendum and you should not pass this. And I did not hear about this until six o'clock this morning. So I agree, there was no information for the community. There should be something put out to all mail ballot boxes, all residents, to have the opportunity to vote on this. Thank you for your time.
I just wanted to say one thing that hasn't been brought up, and I happen to think of this as a retired teacher from Morton West High School. You do realize that 3,000 students enter that building at 26th and leave that building after school. I still substitute there, and we are a very large school. And these kids are walking past this area all the time, walking to school, walking home, getting a bus. I just want you to know that we have an issue here with the transport of high school students. I just want to share that.
My name is Edward Jan. I'm sorry about my casual attire, just came from a sport event. I wanted to make sure I was here on time because this is very important to me. I have been a resident of Riverside my whole life, 65 years I've been here. My kids grew up here and went to school here. I am a licensed clinical professional counselor, and I am also certified as an addictions counselor in the state of Illinois. I've worked in the addiction field about 35 years with the fourth-largest healthcare company in the United States. I'm involved right now with helping to write policies that are going to affect marijuana legalization within our hospital system and have questions about how we're going to tell whether nurses and physicians are impaired. Yes, nurses and physicians do use marijuana, so if you don't think they don't, they do, just like they use opiates and just like they use other drugs. Alcohol, we can call .08 or we can .02. We have no way of knowing what impairment is with cannabis, so it's very difficult to regulate. I am not here to argue whether marijuana is good or bad. It has bad points, it has some good points. What I'm here to argue against is, is having this dispensary in Riverside because it's not appropriate to have that type of dispensary in our town. Does methadone help people get off heroin? Some people, yes, it absolutely does help them get off heroin. Would I want a methadone clinic in Riverside? Absolutely not. I would not want a methadone clinic in Riverside. I'll say something even more controversial. I've, I've done assessments and referred people for over 35 years. I refer them to half, halfway houses for alcoholism and serious drug addiction. They work very well. Would I want one next door to me in Riverside? No. There are places for these kinds of things. It's been legalized, as President Sals said. I'm not here to argue good or bad legalization. What I am here to say is there's a place for these dispensaries. They don't belong in residential areas. They don't belong in Riverside. They don't belong in Neighborsville, Lyons, Brookfield, a variety of places. They need to be in a controlled, commercial area that's well-policed with a, a community that has the backing to be able to do that. So I'm, I'm shocked that we voted on gambling and we didn't vote on this. I just found out about this three days ago. I live on Long Common, I'm two blocks from Harlem Avenue. My wife just had a serious car accident coming out of Costco because of the traffic. I can't even imagine what the traffic would be like in Harlem. So I'm speaking just from a point of view of, of the fact that this doesn't belong in a residential community. It will absolutely attract undesirable people to our area. Do we want to be known as the cannabis western suburb where people can go to get high? I, I don't think we do. So I think it's very important that we reconsider this. If you don't vote, no one, at least as everyone else has said, let people know about it so we, we can have a say in this somehow. If the majority of people in this town vote for it, there's an old saying in a democracy, you get what you deserve. So if that's what happens, that's what happens. But thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Jean Cosman. I live at, in, on Herbert Road in Addison. And this is breaking my heart. It's keeping me up at night. I moved to Riverside because it is safe. Right now, you're rocking the boat heavily for not just me, but for many children to come. There are a lot of children in this town, and this is their future. It's not just ours trying to, to solve temporary problems, okay? We have brains with great power to innovate and come up with ideas for new revenue. This is a terrible idea for new revenue because it's going to hurt so many people that it's just not necessary, okay? Not necessary. And like he said, there are people who are in medical fields and who are, who are trying to be servants, like you all are trying to be servants, and people have weaknesses. Would you want someone to come rescue you who's under the influence? When I was looking up Riverside, and I've, I've known Riverside for a long time. I grew up in Western Springs and had the knowledge to come down the tracks and see this beautiful town, and I always wondered, how do you get there? And now I live here, and I'm very proud to live here, and I think this is a fabulous place. Olmsted had an amazing dream, and we are living in the dream. And the dream does not include cannabis, drugs, none of it, okay? We are living in the dream. If you want to sell this dream, sell something about the green, lead, sell something about the green, the green economy, sell something about architecture. Don't sell drugs. Don't sell cannabis. This is not a good idea. I'm sorry, it's breaking my heart. I have a little kid. It was so hard for me to get her. I'm so proud, she's my daughter. I can't just let anyone decide to make a willy-nilly decision on how her future's going to be because we need to make an immediate decision to solve a temporary problem, okay? We need to think about this. We need to think about this hard because this is a big deal. There's repercussions we cannot solve. Have you ever been around people who are stoned? Have you really? Have you ever been stoned, okay? Do you, would you want to be a child around stoned people? Do you want someone, do you want to go ask someone for help who's stoned? Do you want someone to help you who is stoned? How are you going to know who's not stoned if everyone can be stoned? How are you going to know? If you're a kid, don't you want to be able to have someone you can ask for help? Okay, so who's going to, who are you going to ask for help? There's no adults. There's no adults, there's nobody wants to own up and, and act like an adult and make a wise decision? This is not a wise decision. A wise decision is having a clear mind and being conscious on your decisions, okay? I read something about Riverside before I moved here, and one of the definitions of our town was being an affluent community. I don't see that in the definitions anymore. If you want, you should look up the word affluent, okay? It means prosperous, okay? It's not just about greed, okay? Prosperous has lots of different meanings, and I think everybody needs to go look that up. Do you want to be the village in the woods that's affluent or the village in the woods that's under the influence? Think about that one. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Frank Harford from Blooming Bank. I've been in Riverside for 20-plus years. I think this is a bad idea. I echo the sentiments of previous speakers, and I think their points have been made articulately, and I'm not going to rehash those. A couple of years ago, a book was published by James Surinweke called The Wisdom of Crowds. And with all due respect to our board, and I do respect our board as people and for the work that you do, you're not a big enough crowd. We need a referendum. Thank you.
Next? Yes, please.
That was my dad. My wife was up here. I know a lot of people in this room. I've only lived here for five years recently. I also lived with my dad in the house on Blooming Bank for a spell. I consider Riverside home, I always have. However, I would like to be home watching the football game right now, as I'm sure a lot of guys would. So I was curious that this meeting was scheduled exactly that same time. I'm not saying it was intentional, I'm just saying. But on a more serious note, the, the only thing I want to point out is something regarding the zoning, and that is, at the last meeting, which I was here for part of that, before I had to take my kids home and put them to bed, it was mentioned that, that all businesses or similar businesses should be treated alike, and are, as, as far as the charter or whatever the bylaws are of the township, they should be treated alike. But in fact, commercial cannabis is not treated like other businesses in Riverside because if you look at the zoning of the town, cannabis businesses are not permitted to be in the business, the central business district, but alcohol is. And there was a lot of, a lot of folks at the last meeting were, were drawing parallels to alcohol sales and cannabis sales and saying, in a nutshell, it's the same thing, what's the difference? Well, okay, if there's no difference, then why are there different zones for cannabis sales and alcohol sales in this town? So I think there's just, that's just something to consider, and if we're going to make statements like that, I think we should be consistent with the bylaws. And that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to address the, please?
Hi, my name is Julie Price-Daly. I live at 521 Berkeley Road. I've only lived here for two years, but my family chose to come to Riverside to raise our two young children. I live two doors in from one of the properties on Harlem that is being considered as a potential for this commercial cannabis business. We already have a problem with, we've had two home invasions on our street in the last, in the last year and a half. We already have problems with traffic coming through, little kids playing on the street, the businesses on the strip mall with the, the nail salon and To Your Taste, they are already taking up all of the parking in that strip mall and starting to park in the vacant lot right now. And the economic board, or the commission, I'm sorry, last week talked about the expectation that this is going to be a very high-volume business, and it has to be to make revenue, which I understand. But those cars and those people have to park somewhere, and that is going to happen on my street where my children are playing and where my neighbors' children are playing, and that does not create a safe environment for my children, for people coming in and off Harlem, turning around, trying to find parking. It's just not, it's not a safe way for my children to be outside. This process has not been transparent. I only found out about this a week ago. This process is not, it, it should include time for people to talk, time for people to raise the pros and the cons, which honestly, other than the economic reason, I have not heard any pros from anybody. And yeah, bring it to a vote to the, bring it to the village in the spring, bring it to a referendum, delay this vote tonight. Thank you.
I'm taking a break from, giving you all a break from a very deep subject and taking you to the lighter side of life in Riverside. We are having our Person of the Year dinner, and it is to honor Bill Sherman, who's been with the fire department for 45 years. All of us are very concerned and very well aware of all the comments you have made and don't feel that any of them are being taken lightly. But let's step aside for a minute and remember to associate ourselves with a lot of the good things that are happening in Riverside and have happened in Riverside. And one of them is to honor someone like Bill Sherman. I just happen to have a few dozen tickets if anyone is, is interested, and the dinner is being held on September 25th at the Riverside Golf Club. Price of the tickets is $45 cash bar. And it's a lovely evening, and I hope you'll all take a break from the serious side of life in Riverside and, and come and honor Bill Sherman. So we all love Riverside. I'm a lifelong Riverside, and I won't even tell you how many that is, but a few people in here know how many it is, and Alex, if you're telling, you're in trouble. But we're all concerned about the progress of Riverside. We all care about Riverside. That's why most of us moved here. As I say, the first time I came to Riverside, my parents brought me from the hospital, and I'm on, still on the same street. And the next time that I came to Riverside, it was when my husband and I decided that Riverside was where we wanted to raise our family. And that's what we've done, and we love it, and we care about what's happening. Don't think we're not. And I remember quite a few different Riverside wars, and some of them, we've lived through them, and nobody has been hurt, and it's been fine. So like I said, let's look at the lighter side of Riverside. Buy the tickets, please. Come for a fun night, meet some new people. And the tickets are available at the library, Aunt Diana's. You can also get something good and chewy to make you feel better. Chocolate always makes you feel better. And, and if you're worried, take dark chocolate, that's healthier. And at the Riverside Bank. So hope to see many of you there, and like I said, let's look at the lighter side of Riverside, too. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, guys. Miss, did you, did you, did you miss?
Hi, I'm Brittany Miller. I live at 524 Berkeley. I'm also urging you to opt out. My house sits views directly, one of the possible locations for this, the vacant Title Max. I've lived there seven years. I've witnessed heroin addicts in the trashcan area there. I've witnessed drunk people, people getting out of their car, urinating. I've witnessed someone drop off a Cadillac that was robbed with all the windows broken out. There are currently stolen bikes with all of the parts taken apart in that area, in that little trashcan fenced in area. Last thing that I want to see is a potential dispensary going in that spot. I told my 13-year-old daughter that this was a possibility. That's why I was here tonight. She's like, Mom, that is embarrassing and humiliating. It's embarrassing. She's like, we have to move if this happens. So I definitely want you to take that into consideration. I'm not being selfish because my home sits there. I'm not being selfish because my home sits there, it is in front of this property, I know that it could go to several other different areas on Harlem Avenue. Secondly, the school, Morton West, I'm there, I'm home all day, there are kids around there from Morton all the time, the library, there are kids there all the time. If this is something that you want to pursue and you are not going to opt out, I strongly urge you to stick with the thousand feet. Strongly urge you. I am home all day with my kids, I am a stay-at-home mom, I am basically the neighborhood watch. I see everything that goes on in that area, and that is not something that I want to see happen.
Hi, my name is Lisa Chnunis. I live at 67 Groveland Avenue. Lived in Riverside for four years. I'm not here to say one way about opting in or opting out. I just want to point out that, you know, back in March, the primary of March 2018, Riverside did overwhelmingly vote to legalize marijuana. So there are a lot of people here that are in support of the law. Now whether it should be dispensed legally here, I'm not here to say, I just want to point that out. And for video gambling, it was completely the opposite. Riverside overwhelmingly voted against video gambling here. So, I don't know where those people are tonight, or they're not here defending this dispensary, but I just wanted to point that out. That's all. Thank you. Say one more thing. And there's a lot of fear mongering going on about marijuana. My suggestion, maybe we do have a town hall, we talk about what the dispensary would be, people can get educated on the subject. You know, it would be highly regulated, there'd be people here, it would be, you know, only 21 and over. We get all the facts out in the open, you know, and we'd highly publicize it so everyone would know about it beforehand, and that just might be a way to get everybody educated on it. It's the suggestion. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Braulio Fernandez, 632 Selborn Road. I've been standing here listening. I'm an engineer, and I'm also an educator. So as an engineer, I solve problems. As an educator, I teach and I listen. And I was thinking about what I would be teaching my kids, and listening to everyone here, and I have complete respect to all the speakers that were up here and all the comments that were said. And I think that problem is actually very simple. It doesn't need to be complicated. One thing that I teach my kids is about respect, and I completely have respect for all the community members, and it would be complete disrespect not to listen to your community.
Okay, so we'll continue on with our agenda. Next up are the reports of village officers. My report this evening includes a motion to appoint Kimber Coombs to the Preservation Commission to fill a vacancy, a term to expire 2021. You have her application in front of you. I ask for a motion in a second to approve by Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
By Mr. Hannan. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Hannah.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollard.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we welcome Ms. Coombs to the Preservation Commission. Next up is the village manager's report.
I do not ever record this evening.
Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening is to approve the voucher list of bills September 5, 2019, approve the village board trustee regular meeting minutes of August 15, 2019. Could you ask the folks out in the hall to hold it down, please?
Review and file Riverside Police Pension Board meeting minutes of February 14 and May 30, 2019. File and review, review and file the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of July 24, 2019. A motion to approve a revised special event application for the hot air balloon affair sponsored by the Riverside Township Lions Club to be held at the Big Ballpark on a Sunday in September. A resolution authorizing the sale at disposal of personal property owned by the village of Riverside. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and awarding an at-risk contract, management contract for a designer-led, sorry, an at-risk construction management contract for a designer-led design build of the Arcade Building Design Block Replacement Project in the amount of $44,450 to Burke LLC. A resolution approving a park bench donation application for Mr. Joseph Murphy for the installation of a park bench at the north end of Swan Pond. And a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with invoice, cloud, or payment processing. Does anyone have anything to move for discussion? Not an answer for a motion, second to approve by Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
Second by Ms. Peters. Please call.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Hannah.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollard.
Motion carries.
Trustee, if I may, will we move that, the ordinance discussion up so people can stand and come to their families?
So, next up is the reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any trustee liaison reports? Here and now, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. I've had a request to move up the discussion of the Berkeley Road traffic column, so that we can talk about that a little bit before we move on into the discussion of the cannabis ordinance.
Okay, I meant, I meant the cannabis, I meant that.
Yes, but Mr. Hannan would like to have a, talk a little bit about Berkeley, because I think it feeds into this discussion. One of the things, we have received a number of inquiries and letters, in part because a resident saw that I was out at the Title Max building after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I watched the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from home. I heard a lot of the comments and concerns that were expressed by folks on Berkeley and Burke, so the next day, I went over there to see for myself what the layout was and exactly how the street and that property configured. Somehow that led to kind of an insinuation online that there was some kind of secret thing going on with that property there. There isn't. I was actually doing my job, responding to concerns of the residents that I heard at the park, at the, the, the commission meeting. So, as of this point, we have had several inquiries from several different companies. They are looking at properties all up and down Harlem and Ogden Avenue. There is no single place that anyone is focusing on. Having said that, I know that there are concerns by the folks on Berkeley and Burke, so Trustee Hannan thought it would be a good idea if we were to review the work that has already been done by staff, looking at some of the various things that might be possible should any retail business go into that location, because we are aware as a board of the potential of traffic and parking issues over there. We're very well aware of that. So with that, I'm going to ask Manager Francis to just briefly talk about that, and then we'll move on to the discussion of the cannabis ordinance.
Certainly, and it's just an overview of what occurred at the January 17 Village Board meeting, and it was a discussion regarding closure of Berkeley Road. So I'm actually just going to read the summary of the minutes, because then staff is inquiring if there is additional direction by the village board to further evaluate the closure or other traffic calming measures in this area. So, with regard to the summary information, Chief Weitzel present noted the researching of Berkeley Road closure request was another opportunity for staff to collaborate. He stated that staff met on site to review possible road closure configurations and bought a snowplow to evaluate maneuverability. It was discovered that closing the roadway would require a large expanse of pavement in order to ensure accessibility for emergency and public works vehicles. It would also require the removal of grass sidewalk and trees. There is also a matter of IDOT right-of-way, because Harlem Avenue is a state route, IDOT approval would be needed for any changes to existing roadway that would encroach into IDOT's right-of-way or limit access to Harlem Avenue. Chief Buckley stated that a resident of nearby townhomes on Harlem Avenue approached staff and said she had watched a previous board meeting where this request was discussed, and she was, was, has been waiting for staff to visit the site. She was not in favor of closing the road, and said other residents in the townhome building share her concerns. She uses Berkeley Road regularly to access downtown Riverside without having to go onto Harlem Avenue. It was noted that a traffic counter was on site for seven days. The speed limit for Berkeley Road is 25 miles per hour, and the average speed of cars counted was 31 miles per hour. The percentage of speeding vehicles was 3%, with an average of 32 cars per day using the road. Once again, this is data from the January meeting, so I just want to keep that in perspective. It was also noted that a search of reported crimes on Berkeley and Burke roads for the past eight years showed five reportable crimes on Berkeley with fewer than five on Burke. Staff does not recommend putting a cul-de-sac, but feels this may be a good location for video surveillance camera. If the board disagrees with this recommendation, staff recommends that the board direct hail away the village traffic engineer to study the matter. Director Bailey believes that private property would need to be taken, and that the public sidewalk would need to be relocated in order to make a large enough cul-de-sac to accommodate a snowplow on Berkeley Road. He also stated that it was unlikely that IDOT would allow a cul-de-sac to approach into the Harlem Avenue right-of-way. Based on the discussion at that meeting, the board did not direct staff to move any further with regard to the closure due to the challenges that were noted, so we did not engage the village's traffic engineer any further based on the feedback of that board meeting on January 17. Both, well, Director Bailey, Chief Weitzel, and Chief Buckley are here to answer any additional questions based on these particular items.
So, our staff is here if you have any questions about what Manager Francis has said. Now, as she noted, the likelihood of getting IDOT approval for a cul-de-sac in that location is unlikely, and even if it was possible, I can tell you, having dealt with IDOT, that is going to take a while. That does not mean there aren't other things that could be done. A couple of suggestions that I've heard is putting some kind of gate over there that would prevent people from going down Berkeley. There is a curb cut in the parking lot of that property currently that could be closed off, that would prevent people from exiting the parking lot onto Berkeley. You can make Berkeley one-way going out. So all of those and other things that a proper study done by an in-trainic safety engineer could tell us would be under consideration by the board if something actually were to go into that space. But I just want to reiterate that at this point, we have no idea, one, if we approve allowing a dispensary here, whether one would even come. And if one does come, we have no idea where it would be. So that's the current state of affairs as far as we know. President Sells?
I just, you know, this was after getting the emails, you know, I knew that there were traffic issues based on the January meeting. Some of the emails on the traffic concerns on Berkeley and Burke were eye-opening to me, and that's why I wanted to put this on the agenda. As President Sells says, there's a lot of things that can be done. You know, on my street, we have parking restrictions from 8 to 10, or something like that. That's good and that's bad. My wife got a ticket for parking in front of our house, so she left it out at 9:00, which is, you know, her bad. But, you know, I think looking for input from the neighbors, you know, as Manager Francis said, you know, the cul-de-sac is probably not something that we can get IDOT to move on quickly, but, you know, looking for input on, you know, if that temporary gate can come up, that's helpful. If that can't go up, what else do we have? Do we have parking restrictions? Do we have one-way? You know, it'd be nice to have that discussion, but again, you know, until something goes in there, whether it's, you know, coffee shop, yoga, dispensary, whatever it's going to be, you know, it'd be nice to know part of the, when somebody's going in there, look at the traffic study and look at the appropriate measures, but I think it's, you know, want to have that commitment from the board to the residents that, you know, that would happen in connection with any new tenant coming into that property.
Right. Exactly. Mr. Pollard?
Yes, we've talked about this a couple of times over the years, and we're very interested in pursuing this. What I would like to see us look at that would not require IDOT review or approval would be to narrow Berkeley to one lane at a point between the residential district and the alley, and put a gate there that would be accessible only by public works, police, and fire. And that would prevent any cut-through traffic, and then in the future, if there's a retail business, which there will be, and there's a parking issue, we can look at parking enforcement as an issue there. But I think closing it off like that would likely preclude almost anyone from wanting to park beyond the alley and walk through the gate, and I mean, it may happen, but we can address that if and when it occurs. But I do feel, and let me just say this, too, I know the concern about doing that has been the precedent, that, okay, we do it here, are we going to have to do it on Shenstone, or Olmstead, or one of those other streets on Harlem? I think that any, a traffic study would show that Berkeley is unique. This is a different type of road. It only goes one block, whereas those other streets are more like collector streets where they collect a lot of traffic, and if you close those off, you're going to have residual effect on other streets. I think closing this off would not have a significant residual effect, and I'd really like to see us go ahead and study that, that option.
Would you like to make that a formal motion?
I would make that motion, yes, that we direct staff to proceed with, with a study to look at the option of a gate at that location as I described.
And I would second that motion, as I was also there as well.
Mr. Gallagos. Are there other comments from trustees about the motion?
Can you explain the motion again one more time?
Sure. The motion is to have staff study feasibility, cost, impacts of narrowing Berkeley to one lane at that point between the residential and the commercial zoning with a gate.
One-way out?
No, it would not be one-way. It would be a gate that would only be usable by police, fire, and public works.
Could I suggest a friendly amendment to that? If we're going to look at it, why don't we have our traffic engineer look at that as one option and see if there are any other options?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
I'd be fine with that as well. I'll amend my second.
Yes?
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannah.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollard.
Aye.
And Trustee Jiza is momentarily absent. Okay. Any other questions, anything that you want to comment?
Just to speak on that, which is a different subject, cannabis dispensary, although they were connected, I wouldn't say they're different, so, first of all, we're appreciative of the board looking further into this issue. I would like to make the point that the community in that area right now is already experiencing reckless, fast driving coming in a Harlem. It's not dependent on a commercial business being in that location. That neighborhood has changed so dramatically in the past four to five years. When I moved in there four years ago, my kids were the fifth and sixth children on those two roads. There are now 43 children on those two roads. Our neighbors' bushes have been run into, trashcans have been run into. We, every time the traffic backs up, we get inflow coming through those streets in a reckless and very hazardous way. I think our children's lives are more important than hinging it to whether there's a commercial business in the neighboring lot, but we are appreciative for you to do further study on this issue that we raised in January.
President Sells?
I just wanted to clarify that the motion is not contingent on waiting for any type of development.
Right, it's going to be done.
Something's going to be done right of way.
Exactly. I hope that was clear. It's not contingent on anything. We're going to look at it anyway. Okay, so next up are ordinances and resolutions. We have a force in ordinance amid any various sections of the village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to adult use and medical cannabis business establishes. That's Director App.
Before I go over the commission reviews and recommendations, I think it would be a good idea to briefly go over the law and the state requirements and restrictions on this map. So the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act legalizes both the consumption and production and sale of cannabis for recreational use. and sale of cannabis for recreational use. Beginning in January 1, consuming cannabis will be legal for adults 21 years of age or older statewide. The act does not allow for the public consumption of cannabis. Therefore, people may not consume cannabis on public streets or sidewalks, public parks. Does not allow, it also does not allow municipality to waive the restriction for a special event like it does for public consumption of alcohol. Consuming cannabis while operating in a vehicle is prohibited. Private property owners will have the right to prohibit the consumption of cannabis on their private property. The State of Illinois holds the sole authority to license and regulate cannabis businesses. The village can only enforce its zoning, its building, and its fire and life safety code regulations. Advertising for cannabis infused products or cannabis is prohibited in any form or through any medium within 1,000 feet of a school, a playground, a public park, a daycare, library, or recreation center, or even a gaming arcade in which admission is not restricted to 21 years or older. Advertising of cannabis or cannabis-infused products is also prohibited in any public transit vehicles or shelters, or in any publicly owned or operated property. Advertising may not depict the actual consumption of cannabis or cannabis products, include the image of a cannabis leaf or bud. It cannot depict a person under 21 consuming cannabis, and it cannot include any images designed to or likely to appeal to minors, including cartoons, toys, animals, or use phrases designed to be appealing to or encourage consumption by persons under 21. Cannabis dispensaries may not sell to an individual unless that individual is either registered under the compassionate use of medical cannabis program or the purchaser has been verified to be 21 years of age or older with a valid photo ID. The state has mandated security requirements. There has to be a limited access sales area, so there must be a locked door between the facility's main entrance and the sales area where customers may view and purchase products. During operating hours, all cannabis must be stored and dispensed from a restricted-access area, and all cannabis must be stored in an enclosed locked room or cabinet, and shall be accessible only by authorized personnel. When closed, all cannabis currency, cannabis and currency must be stored in a reinforced vault room in a restricted-access area. Operators are required to prevent individuals from remaining on the premises if they are not engaging in activity permitted by the act. They must install security and alarm systems that have to include perimeter alarms on all entry points and glass break protection on perimeter windows. They must have panic buttons and after-hour intrusion detection alarms that will notify local law enforcement. They must have electronic door locks. They must have continuous electronic video monitoring with unobstructed views of all points of entry and exit, their safes, their vaults, their sales area, et cetera, and unobstructed views of outside areas, the storefront, and their parking lots. All cameras must allow for the capture of facial recognition, so any person entering or exiting the dispensary can be clearly and certainly identified. It also includes the immediate surrounding areas, the license plates of any vehicles in the parking lot. All lighting must be sufficient for these security cameras to provide the required surveillance, and they must be able to remain operational during a power outage. They are also required to inspect and test all security equipment at least every month to ensure the systems remain functional. Dispensaries may not operate without at least two employees on-site at a time. They may not operate if the security system or surveillance system is down. They may not operate if the state's cannabis electronic verification system is inoperative. They may not sell live plants. They may not sell alcohol. They may not sell more than the possession limits outlined in the act. They must keep all lighting outside and inside the dispensaries in good working order with sufficient wattage for security cameras. The hours of operation for medical cannabis dispensaries is currently limited by state statute from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., while the hours of operation for an adult-use cannabis dispensary are going to be limited to 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. by the state statute. Unlike the Medical Cannabis Act, the Cannabis Regulation Tax Act allows municipalities to prohibit or significantly limit cannabis business establishments' location. It also allows municipalities to enact ordinances that govern the time, place, manner, and number of cannabis business establishments' operations within their towns. The Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act does not have any minimum distance requirements from existing schools, daycares, preschools, et cetera, like the original Medical Cannabis Act did. It only has a minimum distance requirement for adult-use dispensaries, and that is that they can't be closer than 1,500 feet to another dispensary. It should also be noted that the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Program Act had a mandatory distance requirement of dispensaries of 1,000 feet from the property lines of various uses that we've outlined before, but recently approved amendments to the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Program Act that took effect on August 9 eliminated those mandatory distance requirements for all medical cannabis dispensaries registering after July 1 of 2019, so it's already in effect. This means that for any medical cannabis dispensary that would locate in the village going forward, there would be no mandatory distance requirement unless the village imposes one. At the time of the public hearing, our village attorney thought the distance limitation was still mandatory, but in fact, it did go into effect in August, so there is no longer a distance requirement for those types of dispensaries. So, that's some background on the act and kind of the what you can and what you can't do for how a dispensary operates and what the requirements are for those businesses. The village board directed staff and the village attorney to draft text amendments to the zoning ordinance that would allow and regulate cannabis business establishments for our Planning and Zoning Commission to conduct a public hearing on and make recommendations to the village board. You also directed the Economic Development Commission to review this item and provide feedback with a focus on the impact of the village's branding and economic development. The Preservation Commission reviewed the proposed text amendments at their August 8 meeting. The Preservation Commission reviews all zoning text amendments to comment on the effect of the proposed amendment on the historic landmark designation of the village or on the general plan of Riverside. These comments are to be submitted to the village board. The Preservation Commission found that the proposed zoning code amendments relative to adult use and medical cannabis business establishments would have no detrimental effect on our historic landmark designation. The Economic Development Commission reviewed the economic impact and other effects of allowing adult use and medical cannabis businesses in Riverside at a special meeting on August 22. The commission found that allowing adult use and medical cannabis businesses would not have a negative impact on the village's brand. The commission also found that those uses could have a positive economic impact on the village, provided the regulations are not too limiting. The commission recommended allowing dispensaries in the B1C district without any distance restrictions from other uses such as schools. They noted that in addition to additional tax dollars, this type of use could bring in more tourism and visitors to the village and could be a catalyst for change and improvement on Harlem Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearing on the text amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to these uses at their August 28 meeting. An adult-use and medical cannabis dispensary would be considered a retail-sales establishment per our current zoning definition and might therefore be considered a permitted use in all the commercial zoning districts in the absence of more specific regulations. Other cannabis businesses such as craft growers and cultivars are higher-intensity use and would be classified as industrial uses or agricultural uses, which are not permitted in our business districts. The amendments included changes to the definitions section to specifically exclude adult use and medical cannabis dispensaries, and they also included adding the definitions of the various cannabis businesses established by the act. Amending the definition of retail-sales establishments to exclude cannabis dispensaries does two things. It removes them from automatically being considered permitted uses, and it allows the village to assign dispensaries as separate and distinct uses, allowing the village to decide which districts this use would be allowed in. Adding the definitions of the various cannabis business establishments creates and establishes as all the cannabis-related uses, and by not specifically including the uses in our use tables, allows them to be considered prohibited uses. As you've heard, several residents from the Berkeley and Bird area did speak at the public hearing and expressed concern about these types of uses, that they are not family-oriented businesses, that they were in favor of a 1,000-foot buffer, and that they also expressed concerns about traffic and parking. There were a couple of individuals who spoke in favor of allowing dispensaries on Harlem Avenue and noted that a 1,000-foot buffer may be too restrictive. One noted that better access to medical cannabis is very important and that these uses should not be so heavily restricted that it continues to be difficult to access with long drives and long waiting times. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed the proposed text amendments and expressed concern about some of the language. They discussed the use designation, the hours of operation, and the required buffer. They were concerned that the designation as a special use was not consistent with how the zoning code regulated other uses such as packaged liquor stores, microbreweries, distilleries, tattoo parlors, pawn shops, et cetera, in the B1 zoning district. They discussed the hours of operation and the distance requirements for liquor licenses. After a great deal of discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission concluded that the proposed text amendments with their amendments were consistent with other uses and the intent of the zoning ordinance, and that the use standards would benefit the community and protect surrounding areas. They voted 6-0 to recommend approval of a text amendment that amends the definition of the retail-sales establishment to exclude cannabis businesses and adds the definition of the various cannabis businesses established by the act, designates adult-use and medical cannabis dispensing organizations as permitted uses in the B1C zoning district, it creates use standards for both adult-use and medical cannabis dispensing organizations, which include a minimum distance restriction of 500 feet from schools, no onsite consumption permitted, including a requirement to post-signage inside the establishment that onsite consumption is prohibited, that no food or alcohol sales or consumption on the premises, that product display shall not be visible from the public street or sidewalk, that the hours of operation for adult-use cannabis dispensing organizations be restricted from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, adding minimum parking standards, and that they must be created for this use specifically based on employee counts and/or gross floor area, that no odors should be detectable from outside the premises, that they enter into a parking enforcement agreement so that the owner must allow the police department to enforce traffic and parking regulations on the site, to require cooperation with the village so that operators and property owners where a dispensary is located shall provide access to village police, fire, and code enforcement personnel during normal hours of operation, to verify compliance with the village codes and cooperate with village officials in the provision of security footage when requested and in any related prosecutions of any persons who violate local ordinances or state law, and also to require business owners to provide the village with copies of any violation reports or enforcement actions that are taken by the state. Based on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to require onsite parking, staff has reviewed other communities' ordinances, requirements for cannabis dispensaries, as well as consulted with our village traffic engineer to find out what the International Traffic Engineers Traffic Manual states about parking demand for these uses. And generally, the parking demand and requirements for these uses are similar to that of retail businesses, with most communities requiring approximately one parking space per 250 to 300 square feet, kind of depending on how you calculate your averages. Based on this research, the ordinance that you have before you includes a parking requirement of one parking space for each 300 square feet of gross floor area for both adult-use and medical cannabis dispensaries. Additionally, due to the fact that the distance requirement for medical dispensaries has been repealed and therefore are no longer minimum distance requirements under the state statute for new medical dispensaries, the village board should consider whether to impose a distance restriction from schools for medical dispensaries for those uses similar to what is recommended or what you decide on for adult-use dispensaries. As I said, the ordinance before you incorporates all of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations, so that reflects what they voted on. As your zoning administrator, I would also like to note that according to the provisions of the zoning ordinance, the village board decision on any zoning amendment is a matter of legislative discretion that is not controlled by any one standard. However, in making your recommendation and decision, the village board shall consider the standards for text amendments, which are in the code that I also listed in your staff report. Unlike with variations and special uses, not every standard must be met for these text amendments. Village council is here, Chief Weitzel is here, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have, but you have the text amendment before you, and staff would look for some guidance or amendments to it that does include medical cannabis distance requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Director App. So, before we begin our discussion, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to adult use and medical cannabis business establishments.
Sue moved by Mr. Gallows.
So, seconded by Mr. Gallows.
Make a conversation. Trustees?
I'll start. I believe that any decision that is not an opt-out tonight is premature and a derelict of our duties. We have an obligation to provide adequate time for the community to respond. Most of these people here have only known about this for less than a week, and we've already, already had an overwhelming support for opting out. So, we need to give them time to respond, if necessary, by referendum. We also have an obligation to listen to the concerns of our citizens and to try to address those concerns before we move ahead, before we move ahead, regardless of the incremental financial gains that may be acquired from immediate action. We have an obligation not to replace the judgment of our constituents that are concerned about these issues with our own judgment that has been solidified in entrenched positions. We should opt out until we can fully address the issues raised and provide assurances to our community that the concerns that they've raised will not affect the quality of their lives here. I have several points I want to raise here. Many residents have said they do not want this. I did a back-of-the-napkin calculation, and I've received 34 opt-out emails, and only 13 that are in support of this. As a comparison to video gaming, I received around 38 opt-out emails, and only seven in support. The numbers are very close. So, we have an overwhelming number of residents who are saying, "Slow down. Don't do this. This isn't who we are." And we need to listen to them. That is our obligation, and that's why I was elected to represent the community. The residents have cited many different reasons for why this is not in line with our village, with our village's brand. The potential increase in crime, traffic, access to drugs, lack of regulations and oversight means, to any, any means to detect if someone is actually under the influence, the lack of an actual financial plan or projection for locating a recreational dispensary in the bounds of our unique village, which is very unique. Everyone agrees with this. The unclear nature of the alleged revenue to be gained from these businesses and the lack of confidence in the state's projection of that number. We have no clue. Video gaming didn't pan out the way the state thought it would for revenue. The relaxed zoning standards and the disregard they have for protecting our children and our families from exposure to these recreational dispensaries. We've heard from several medical professionals that have cited numerous reasons why increasing the access and visibility of cannabis to our children is dangerous. I'm not talking about whether it's legal or not. I'm talking about increasing the access to it. This is not aligned with Riverside's core principles and personality and the family values that we hold dear. Someone raised the pot referendum that was at the same, that was put on the ballot at the same time as the video gaming referendum. That was a referendum on whether or not we legalize cannabis use. That is completely different than whether or not we want to have a dispensary in our backyards, and that's what it is. Riverside is intimately, every commercial business here is intimately entwined with a single-family resident. That's, that's who we are. That's our brand. We can't avoid that. We should be embracing that. So, it's a completely different question, and a lot of people, myself included, would vote for legalization of cannabis for social justice reasons alone. They have nothing to do with whether or not they would want a cannabis dispensary on their street corner. I am, I'm frustrated and I'm, I'm disheartened by the fact that we have this focus on Harlem Avenue, and somehow putting this business on Harlem is going to mitigate some of the problems that have been raised. They are part of Riverside, too. They are just as much a part of Riverside, and, you know, this is going to disproportionately affect them. We should be listening to them more, the most. It's going to be, it's, think of what we did with, with the Army Corps of Engineering, the DAM project that's still going on. Who did we listen to? Who are we still listening to? It's a project that's going to affect everyone in this village. It's going to increase property values for the people who have flooding in their homes, but we are listening specifically to the Maplewood residents who are going to be directly affected by that work. That is important. We need to listen to the people who are going to be disproportionately affected by whatever I do believe that there are differences between alcohol, packaged liquor, and cannabis. Some people here have talked about it tonight. I also believe that, that there are differences between this and video gaming, but, but all of them have some similarities and all of them have differences. So, to say that, that, well, video gaming is so different than, than this, than cannabis, it's just, it's, it flies in the face of reality. Each one has to be evaluated on its own merit. Many communities have already said no to video gaming and no to cannabis, as was raised We are a unique village, and, and the, the commercial businesses that are brought in should be in line with our brand. I respectfully disagree with the Economic Development Commission's finding that this would not tarnish our brand. Our brand is family values. That's one of our key brands. That's one of our key brands. It's interesting to me that this board deals with family values almost on a bi-weekly basis. WESRA, video gaming, VRBO rentals, even the pride flag to play. All, the, the heart of those discussions was about how that affects our community and the families that live there. And to say that that shouldn't be considered here is just, it's at odds, frankly, with what, why I was elected, why I believe I was elected to represent the village here. No, no one said that developing a business in Riverside is going to be easy. And we are super unique. We should be trying to capitalize on that uniqueness, not looking for the easy way out. I feel like this is an easy way out. And we need our Economic Development Commission and other, other bodies who've said they are willing to come alongside and provide creative solutions to provide creative solutions here. I don't deny that we don't, we have a financial need. We absolutely do. But I don't believe this is the way to address that. I do recognize that from the board's perspective, that maybe I'm, I'm in the minority here. And honestly, I truly hope that I am wrong. I hope that none of the issues that they have raised here are going to be a problem for us. But I'm not willing to be the test case. I'm not willing to place my actions behind that hope alone. I want to wait and see how businesses affect the communities they are integrated into. These, these businesses are unique. We need to see how they affect the communities first. I don't believe we need to be a first mover here. Several people have said waiting for the referendum. I agree with that. I also agree with waiting to see how these businesses affect the communities. And, and frankly, if they do align, if the businesses end up, these cannabis, these recreational cannabis businesses do end up aligning with our brand, I am fine two and three years from now coming back and saying, "Come on in." If, if somebody locates across Harlem with a cann, recreational cannabis business and we're scared that we're not going to get that revenue, and, but we watch what they do for the next two to three years, and they don't have the crime issues, and they don't have the social issues that we've been talking about, and they don't create problems for the, for the, you know, the traffic and the, the children seeing these things. If all of that's not true, I am more than welcome, I am more than happy, to create economic incentives to get them to come across the road and join us and give us their revenue. But I don't believe that's going to be the case. Let's see if it will be. Every business located in this town seems to be intimately entwined with single-family residence housing. This isn't just a Harlem and Long Common issue. We are truly unique in this manner, and this is an inherent part of our brand. We have the opportunity, however difficult, to shape our business community, to reflect that uniqueness. And I believe that although it may take a while and be hard, doing that hard work of aligning our business goals with the key aspects of our brand that make us who we are, those are the things that are going to pay dividends in the end. And those are the things that are going to elevate us above our competition. I'm willing to lose out on a little bit of revenue right now to make sure that we are not detracting from the inherent attributes of Riverside by allowing this business in.
Point of order, President Sells. I did not see an opt-out discussion on the agenda. That's not up for a vote today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just so we're clear. So we're not voting on opting out?
Well, there's always the motion for it, correct?
You need notice.
Yeah.
I just, I just think that, I think you're playing with a little bit of gamesmanship there.
The law?
I think, no, I just gamesmanship here. These people are...
Well, let's, let's, hold on a second.
Give them a chance. Listen to them. Don't blow their ears.
I've been listening.
Not yet.
That's disrespectful, Mr. Jesus.
Oh, fine.
If you don't want to approve this, you can vote against it. But we're not voting tonight on opt-out.
Why not?
Because we haven't...
Why are you not voting on opt-out?
Because we have an ordinance before us that was properly noticed on the agenda.
So you could change that ordinance for our...
Not without it being posted on the agenda.
Well, you can, you can determine to then postpone this decision, correct?
We could do that, yes.
You could postpone this decision to hear your residents.
Yes, and could you...
Express their views about a very contentious issue. Is that correct?
We've already said yes.
Did we open this up to public comment?
Thank you.
And it's, it's, it's time for us to have our discussion now.
Well, it's time for you to listen to your residents, too.
We are listening to you, Erica. We are listening to you.
Can I move to postpone this so that we can have a discussion about an opt-out at the next?
You, if you want to.
I would like to move, please.
Thank you.
Can you let us continue our meeting, please?
Yes, please.
Okay. So your motion is to table this?
Table the, the ordinance amending the various sections, and I would like to put on the next agenda and publicly announce that we will have a, a vote on an opt-out.
So you want to...
Wordsmith, inform me if you want.
Please through the parliamentary aspect of this?
So if the motion would need to table the, the ordinance, consideration of the ordinance until the next village board meeting, which is, as a date certain, we need to have in there, which is Jessica September the 19th?
The 19th.
Yeah. To September 19th, 2019, and to bring back an ordinance, an opt-out ordinance for the agenda as well. Right? Is that the motion?
So those should be combined into one motion like that?
They, they can be. And they, they can also, if no one...
Is that what you want?
I think so. It sounds like that's right. You, you wanted to combine the opt-out with this code amendment.
Right. Well, this, this has been noticed up, and it, and it, and it will get voted on at some point unless no one moves and no one seconds its adoption, which we know isn't correct because we've had a motion and a sign.
Yes.
So this will be voted on. By, your, your motion would table the vote on this to September 19th and would ask that staff be directed to prepare an opt-out ordinance.
Correct. Yes. Thank you.
Right? That's the motion?
Yes.
And that's okay because the opt-out ordinance, at least in my opinion, is not, doesn't need to be part of the zoning code, so it wouldn't have to go through that whole process. So that, that, that is possible.
Can I ask a question? Does that give the residents enough time to do what they, for us to communicate with them and have these, these meetings to educate them on this, on this question and get the word out? Because right now, all we're seeing is opposition to this, and no one's really spoken to support it. So it's, it's September 19th, which is only two weeks away. Too soon. I, I, I just feel like we need to open our ears and hear what we heard today and the emails and determine whether or not, how much time we need to hear everyone, meet with people. You've been doing these town, these town hall meetings. I think this is a perfect topic to attract more people to it. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for us to show them what type of town we are.
So if, if, if we're going to do this in a parliamentary way...
Yeah, let's do it that way.
We can't really have these side discussions because it won't... You can do that, as I've told you.
Right.
And you've done it before.
Let's follow it though.
But we've got a motion to table to a date certain and to bring forth an opt-out ordinance that's a combined motion. As long as that's seconded, it can be heard that way.
And it was seconded by Mr. Jesus. So we're, now we're going to talk about the motion to postpone. Mr. Pollak.
I think we're kind of going in circles here or something. I mean, obviously, if we vote against the zoning ordinance, we'll come back with an opt-out ordinance, right?
Correct.
So why not, why don't we just go ahead and with what we're doing tonight, if the majority doesn't want to approve this recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, then we'll consider an opt-out ordinance at the next meeting, right?
Well, my, but Doug, my, my comment to that would be that the emails that we've all received and we've been copied on, and what people have said, they want to, they want to communicate with us more and have more opportunity to speak. So why don't we just pass on tonight and, and have a forum up in the, up in the auditorium upstairs and really talk to these people and hear what they have to say as a group,
I just wanted to note that I have been talking to people all week on both sides of the issue, actually for two weeks or more. So I've, and I know that there's people in this room that can attest to that.
President Sells, if I may. I, I understand where people are coming from, what they're just learning about it, but I, I'm, I have a little bit of sense of frustration. We started talking about this in July, and I dug up the old landmark from July 24th. And at our July 18th meeting, we said, and this is reading from Mr. Upus's article on the front page of the landmark, "Trustees are hopeful they will get some picture of the public's receptiveness to business dispensing cannabis by the time they talk about the subject again at their next meeting on August 1st." Quote, "I think hearing from the residents at that August meeting will be critical." Nice quote for me. Thanks for captioning, Bob. You know, I, I, I want people to understand also the framework of this discussion. First of all, we're setting ourselves up for a problematic structure where we don't vote to opt-out, we don't vote to amend the ordinance. And then what do we have? We have a situation where a mallegal cannabis business is a regular business, can come in with no restrictions. Because amending the ordinance, amending the zoning code is not required to allow cannabis. What we've been working on for the past four meetings, and Chief Weitzel has had some great suggestions, is putting things in the ordinance that are protective of our village. Chief Weitzel has looked at best practices. He made recommendations to the board on the access that the police can have, ways to partner with the business and its operators, having a squad car parked out in front that's funded, you know, things that groups in Colorado, California, and other states have done that have seen work. So the chief has done his homework. What I don't want to do is be in this stalemate tailspin where we don't opt-out, we don't amend the ordinance, January comes in, and we have somebody opening for business without any of the chief's protections, without any of the 500-foot or 1,000-foot radiuses, and can go into any zoning district that they want to. So I just want to caution that. The second point I want to make is that, you know, allowing or disallowing a dispensary is, is not a discussion that we make in a, in a vacuum. That, you know, if it is across the street, and my fear, I'm in first division, if it does go on Ogden next to Pops, is are we going to have the same problems without the ability to be proactive? And I go back to, I've been in Riverside for 20 years, a horrendous track, crash on Long Common back at the time where Lalo's, I think it was $5 pitchers of margaritas, maybe 10, I forget what it was. But this guy, you know, at Lalo's, and there had been a lot of problems from these types of nights at Lalo's, tearing down the street, misses the curb, car flips, he and his girlfriend, you know, die on the front lawn across the street. You know, even then, there was discussion on, you know, does something need to be done? I, I, I go to, trustee Peters, your comments, this is a unique place. We have a unique place, uh, street, a police force. I'm afraid of relying on our neighbors to police and regulate and hold these businesses to the high standards that we know that Chief Weitzel and his force will do. The third point is revenue. And, and part of the email exchanges, and I really enjoyed the email exchanges, you know, where are the other sources of revenue? And this is something we've struggled with. You know, we've discussed, is there the possibility of a budget deficit this year? We've had budget deficits in the past. Where does the revenue come from? It comes from property taxes, which are capped. It comes from sales tax, and it comes from our village fees. And, you know, the alternative, the easy alternative, if we don't want to have this other source of revenue, do we want to raise fees on our vehicle stickers? I mean, does anybody think having a $200 a car vehicle sticker to close the budget gap feasible? You know, to say, "We'll find another source of revenue," what do you think that the village has been doing for the last 10 years? So I don't think you can talk about a dispensary or any other business coming in that's going to generate revenue, just like we like it, we don't like it, we don't like what's going to bring to the community. We need to ask the right question. Do you want $200 a vehicle parking sticker, or do you want a dispensary? I mean, in my mind, that's part of the equation here. So I just want to make sure as we go down this route, if that's the way that we want to go with the votes, you know, we're sprawling down this path that might not get us to a, a better result than we have under this ordinance.
I've been rather quiet on this issue because I wanted to see how the drama played out. I've seen this happen plenty of times in our village before with previous issues. So I just wanted to hear what people had to say. Someone asked me if I was for or against cannabis. Quite honestly, I don't care if someone does cannabis. It's not my position in any government level to determine what someone does in privacy owned home. If I wanted to be against cannabis, I would show the worst druggie and say, "This is what happens if you do drugs." If I was for cannabis, I'd show you the most decorated Olympic athlete and say, "This is what happens if you do cannabis." I don't care. This is what I am for. I am for our village's ability to pay for decent roads for our residents to drive on and to park on. I am for us being able to hire staff that provides the services that our residents deserve and to make sure they have the tools and equipment to provide that. To not look at any source of revenue would be completely a disservice to our residents. Time is running out. Our sources of revenue are decreasing. Our, our money is decreasing. We're going poorer and poorer. Time is what we do not have.
Yeah. And just to follow up on what trustee Galagos was saying, yeah, there is a stigma, and it's quite clear in this room, associated with cannabis and cannabis use, but it doesn't occur to me that way. I see this as an opportunity for something new and modern and unique. And I know that if we don't allow cannabis sales in Harlem, we leave the door open to Harlem Avenue dispensaries in North Riverside and Berwyn. We will have no control over it, none of the benefits, and I don't think that's fair to Riversideers. They also put us at a financial disadvantage, and I think Riversideers deserve a chance at this.
Bob?
Can, can I suggest we address the motion on the table so we can move on to the zoning?
Right.
I, I just had a question. People raised the issue of if we don't vote on this now, today, it's too late, or we're getting, hitting upon that January 1st deadline. When would you say would be the last time that we can vote on either amending the ordinance, amending the, the code or opting out? When is the latest time for that?
Do you mean the safest time?
Yeah, safest.
Guarantee that the opt-out...
That you would recommend.
Well, before the, before the January deadline.
Okay. So a December?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would have the same legal effect as if you passed it next.
Okay. I just, I, I worry about getting people's input by the September 19th date that is in the current motion. So maybe we should have a town hall. I don't know if I'm amending my motion. I don't know if I can do that, but I think trustee Jesus raises a good point, that if we don't need to do this immediately, we should allow the community time to, to give us further input on this.
Well, right now, your motion is to table it to September 19th and to bring forth an opt-out ordinance for consideration. It was seconded by trustee Jesus.
Okay.
So I, I would say you can, you can move, you can amend your motion and see if it's seconded, or you can, you know, this can be voted on?
Yep. I would amend it to be, and I'm trying to pull up our calendar, like a November timeframe, like then maybe the first meeting in November. I think that's an adequate amount of time. That's two months from now for the public to get back to us, and maybe even have a, a town hall. So I don't know what meeting that is, but...
November 7th.
I would amend it to be November 7th. The motion would be November 7th.
Okay. And in all other respects, the motion would stay the same?
Correct.
Would be no opt-out ordinance brought forth? It would, that would be brought forth on that date as well?
Yes. I'm just realizing I'm out of town on November 7th. I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. I'm just, I have a partner meeting that I, um, how about, is the second, second one in November? What is that? That would be 14 days from then?
February Thanksgiving.
The week, week before Thanksgiving, I think, yeah. Right?
Yes.
Okay. So 7 plus 14 is 21. November 21?
Yeah, that's not Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Because the fourth, Thanksgiving is the fourth Thursday, so that's the 28th, right?
Okay. I would like to amend it to the November 21st meeting, so I can be there. Thank you.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is to table the consideration of the ordinance that's before the village board right now to November 21st, 2019, and to at that time bring forward for consideration an opt-out ordinance in parallel to the zoning ordinance that's been considered and is before the board.
I'm sorry, was it trustee Gisa?
It was.
Okay.
It was.
So this is, this is why I'm against that idea. For, I mean, I have been, I've been talking about this every single day since July. For, for every email I've received, I've talked to three or five people. And it's quite clear to me that, that what we are experiencing is a very heartfelt objection by a substantial minority of our residents against the idea of cannabis. But we also have an actual vote by our residents that was two-thirds in favor of legalization. Okay, we respected you and let you have your voice. Let me have mine. It is hard for me to imagine a scenario where if we wait for months on this, that we are going to hear anything differently than what we've heard the last two months. I agree with trustee Evans, the stigma that keeps being asserted is self-imposed. I don't feel like there is a stigma to a cannabis distribution store in Riverside. You know, the claim that this is against our family values, according to whom? I don't feel like they're against our family values. I feel, I feel like, I feel like our family values is responsible parenting, raising our kids. It's, one of, one of, one of the commissioners at the, at the EDC said she walked by a medical dispensary in Oak Park for years and never knew it was there. So all of the fear that I hear, I, I feel it when I, when I sit and I listen and I watch the faces of the people who I know are speaking from the heart. Yes, I hear you, but I don't agree with you. I think that the, this notion that there's going to be increased crime, there's no evidence to support that. This notion that it's going to hurt our kids, they're going to walk by a building with no sign that makes any indication of what's in that building. You've heard the extensive regulations that the state put on it. Nobody is going to be able to get inside that building. How is, how is that possibly going to hurt our kids when not a single one of them could get within six feet of the door? I just, these are assumptions. I, I read, you know, this litany of, of, of all these horrible things that are going to happen without a shred of evidence, but just, I don't, I don't like it. And you know what? I get that. You know, if you want to say, I personally, it's against my values, I personally don't want it here, absolutely. But don't try to bootstrap that into some kind of, kind of quasi-scientific argument that they're supporting because there isn't. You know, one person said, "Well, I haven't heard anything that suggests it's a good thing other than, than revenue." What about the revitalization of Harlem? You know, I've lived here for 32 years, and that has been the area that has languished. This is an opportunity for us to finally have the revenue to do something against it. If there is, if there is increased policing needed, wouldn't you want to have the opportunity to have revenue to pay for that policing? If there's going to be, and there will be, without question, there is going to be a dispensary within the immediate vicinity of Riverside. Would you rather have it under our control and our regulation by our police department and also have the opportunity for whatever revenue we might get from it? I don't view this as strictly a revenue item, but it's foolish to not acknowledge that there's a revenue component. There is no other business, and you know, I've been doing this now for 10 years, and I hear, "Well, tighten your budget." We have tightened our budget. "Well, think of something else." We have been racking our brains for decades to find something else. There is no other business available to this community that would return the revenue stream to this community that this would. There is no reason to wait on this. And if we wait, this village will not get it. Because right now, given our size, given our demographic, the only opportunity that we are going to have to have a, one of these upscale retail stores in this town is if we act now. If we wait till November, it's not going to happen. But now to go back to a practical point, what trustee Pollock says is exactly true. If you don't want this, if you want to opt out, vote against this ordinance. Because if this ordinance dies, if it doesn't pass, then we have no other alternative but to opt out, or we end up in the very serious situation that trustee Hannan has described. Because if we don't opt out by January, it is a permitted use as a retail establishment. So the question that you want to address is in front of you. The input you want to hear, we've heard. We are, we are, we are elected to represent. Let's do it. Let's do our job.
Can I respond to that a little bit?
Of course.
I have to say, I am embarrassed right now. And I told my wife when we were going to do this, but I am embarrassed by this board right now. And here's why. According to whom is what you just said. Everyone that stood up here today spoke on this. And you say you heard it, but I don't think you listened, because what they're saying is not fear, Ben. It's what they're trying to communicate with you, just like Kristen came and spoke, and spoke on the gambling. We gave those people an opportunity to vote on a referendum. I promise you, just like White Fence Farm and Raising Cane's and Popeyes, there's three chicken places on that one stretch of Harlem Avenue, there's going to be multiple dispensaries. It's incredible to me that you can only have a dispenser within 1,500 feet of another dispensary, but we're willing to put it within 500 feet of a school. That's, that's idiocy. And somebody, and somebody said earlier today, and I, I, look, I voted, I voted for the referendum, and it changed my mind when I saw the 75% vote come out against it. I said, "I was wrong. I was wrong." And I, we voted unanimously as a board, we went in controversially like this, because we gave the residents a chance to, to actually hear them and listen to them. I, you know, even the fact that this meeting today is not upstairs in the auditorium when, when the gaming one was, so people had to stand out in the hallway and watch on TV, I'm embarrassed by that. Someone said, and it's the greatest quote of the night, "We are not enough, big enough crowd to vote on this." That was proven tonight, it was proven by the emails that we all received, that I was copying. I, I did not have any forwarded email to anyone through Jessica that was sent to me. I forwarded those emails on, so please forward those on to me. But again, we're not a big enough crowd, we're just not a big enough crowd. This has nothing to do with fear. I've smoked weed before. I don't really... The fact of the matter is, is that these people are here tonight concerned with what we're doing. They've told us, we learned three days ago, we learned at 6 o'clock today, we learned and we go, "Please, give us time to talk to you." There was a physician who actually sat up there and said, "Let's meet together as a group and talk through this." There is no way in hell that we need to rush into this. Let me tell you something. I wrote these down because it's almost laughable that people think we need to rush into this. Before, there was, there was the Blue Parrot before Sawmill. Who remembers the Blue Parrot? Right? Half the world remembers it, half of it doesn't. There's always going to be another opportunity in business. I am not the best investor, I'm a conservative investor, but I always wait to see what things happen. And I think that when we have this legacy of this beautiful town, and we've got families here who want us to, to wait and listen and put it to a referendum, why can't we give them an opportunity to vote? Why do six individuals get a chance to determine this for the rest of the village? We didn't do it for gaming, we rushed into VRBO, and then we backed out of VRBO. I mean, they've asked us why we can't go to a referendum, why can't we give them a vote? I guarantee you, I guarantee that anyone that goes for this, every single person in this room is going to vote against you if you ever try to get reelected. And I'm one of the... It's not about fear. This is about listening to these people, giving these people an opportunity to meet with you in a village hall, not the six of us, but meet with the president of our village and speak to you. Speak to them in an open forum. We had 11 people at the first village for the village hall meeting. I guarantee you'll have 300 there. It will be a fantastic display of what makes Riverside great, both supporters and non-supporters of this. It has nothing to do with fear. It has nothing to do with fear. It has to do with these people's feelings of what they feel is good for their families, and that's it. It's not fear, it's, it's, you're listening to the wrong things. Sure, people are going to get here and say, "Oh, weed's this, weed's that." I don't give a about that. I want these people to sit there and look out their window and feel good about where they live. And hey, maybe that means a dispensary, but let's give the village and the people a chance to vote. I promise you, there's not, there's no rush. The Title Max lease isn't going away, that's basically going... We have a crown jewel, by the way, redeveloping Burlington and Harlem Avenue is a crown jewel opportunity. I am a relatively savvy businessman, and that is a crown jewel opportunity to build something there with multiple levels of residential homes and commercial there, and, and great investments take time and patience. And if we rush into this, I think we're making a... These people, these people, they're here. And if you're here to, to, to go for this, please speak, because I want to hear you. Like, like, tell me why these people are wrong, please.
Trustees, trustee decide, like a chance to respond?
It's Gisa, but that's fine.
I'm sorry, trustee Gisa. It's true, this isn't, this is not a big enough crowd. And, and I would like to acknowledge the three commissioners that worked on this ordinance that was 20 Riverside residents, all stakeholders, who lent their expertise to this very thorough and thoughtful process. It wasn't just us seven. There's many in the community that worked on this ordinance. And I also, I think that you're neglecting to acknowledge the great deal of support that there is for this, this initiative.
I haven't seen it, I haven't gotten a... Ben, don't stop.
Better speak.
Sure.
There is a great deal of support for this initiative in town.
Where?
I mean, I'm sure you read social media this week, you can see that there's support in it.
Order, please. Order, please.
I just, I mean, I'm sorry, I can't give you...
You're putting it by us, you're hurting us.
Order, please.
You're letting it on social media.
Okay, this is...
Do those people who live in Riverside, I mean, you know, you don't know? Tell me about those comments, Bob.
How much rigor is this going to generate?
This is a village board meeting, not a free-for-all. We are discussing a motion to table, which is a procedural motion, which means it's a discussion...
Can we just take a vote?
...by the trustees. So are there further, is there further comment with regard to the motion to table? Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Pollock.
No.
So we'll go back now to the ordinance before us, which is the ordinance amending the various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to adult use of medical cannabis business establishments. You have it before you, beginning on page 157 of your agenda packet. So are there comments or discussion about the ordinance before you?
You slipped that one, bias, I'll tell you. Pretty sneaky. Pretty sneaky how you did that. I know, this whole thing's a setup today.
Yes, it is.
Look at these two over here, they agree with you. This is a complete setup today, it's a bloody setup. Thanks to the, we should have a vote on this, and we're not. This is wrong what you're doing, you're shoving it down our throats.
Right. Yes.
Are there comments on the ordinance before you?
If we could get to the review of the suggestions on there, one thing that I think is important to visit, you know, there was a discussion on, the state does not include a minimum property line discussion. There were a number of comments on the property line between school, if it's 1,000 feet or 500 feet, if there's a measurement between here and the Berwind Library. Given the fact that, you know, the zoning district does spread down the length of Harlem and on down around to Ogden, I think it's worthwhile to revisit that 500-foot limitation, because I think that the, you know, a lot of discussion, a lot of the emails I received, you know, were concerned about, you know, the misconception that the board had selected the Title Max property, which is yet another incorrect statement that was out there, and just would love to get sort of a, if we are going to decide on this tonight, you know, how do we feel, given the feedback we've gotten through public comments tonight on the students walking down Harlem Avenue and the proximity to the library? I, I'd like to hear some discussion on that. I don't know if that has to be in the form of a motion to revise...
No, it's just a discussion.
I mean, what we'll need to do, if you make any changes, is you'll need to amend your motion to adopt to include whatever grows out of this discussion. But it's perfectly okay.
So I know, I remember, I think it was, it might have been both the EDC and the Planning and Zoning, there was, was some discussion about treating this the same as a packaged liquor establishment, which is 100 feet.
I'd like to know that Illinois Municipal League has put out recommendations for 1,500 feet barriers. That is, that is a group that we have routinely gone to, to look for recommendations from. And so I would, I would highly suggest we increase the number to 1,500 feet, particularly as trustee Hannan just talked about, this is not just about that one location. So I would, I would highly suggest we move and increase this to 1,500 feet, per the Illinois Municipal League's recommendation.
15, I'm sorry, 1,500 feet from what?
From schools. They also suggested libraries, I would, I would throw in libraries, I talked about that last time. Anything that relates to children, frankly.
I'm just looking through the map, is that in here? I thought it was in the Planning and Zoning minutes.
It was in the Planning and Zoning.
That was not attached, I thought it was...
So just, just to re, just as a point of clarification on that, the, the draft ordinance, because the Illinois Municipal, had two ordinances, draft ordinances. The ordinance that you referred to also included cultivation, distribution, transportation, allowing all of those as well. Ours does not. And at the end of those two draft ordinances, it specifically said that any given, any given municipality would have to tailor the ordinances to their particular situations.
And I would say that 1,500 feet is more than adequate here, given the fact that every, almost every business that would be eligible here backs upon a single-family home, and it is, it is intimately entwined with schools and libraries. And I think that we need to protect those. So I do believe that that 1,500 feet is in line with our, our village's identity, our personality.
And we can pass down the map if people don't have it, but, you know, this map that was included in planning and zoning, if it is 1,000 feet, basically would bring the restricted area down, looks like just past the entrance on Long Common, but no other part of Harlem would be affected. Just ballparking it, if we increased it to 1,500 feet, it would bring it down only maybe... only, um, maybe just short of Burlington, but leaving, and I can pass this down to you, uh, but leaving all of Harlem from the train tracks south, um, which I'm not sure really materially affects your concern, trustee Peters, on, on stores that are, areas that butt up against, um, residences. And, and I, you know, I sort of go back to, um, you know, if you, not to, not to pick on the Minuteman, but that's, that's where I get my propane filled, so that's where I go. Uh, you know, if you walk in there, it, you know, it is, uh, beer, wine, liquor, rolling papers, um, paraphernalia, really anything you, you wanna see. So I'm not quite sure, um, you know, saying that every business in Riverside is intertwined, um, i- i- is, is quite that accurate. But, you know, I think 1,000, um, you know, adds that protection. I'm sensitive to the, to the high school. Um, you know, I don't see raising it to 1,500, uh, really gets us, um, you know, gets us really any added, added protection from, from schools, given how far in, um, the various schools are from the border of Harlem.
Well, let's see one thing, though. We're not, there's no fear in this. I think that we also need to include in all business districts in Riverside, not just Harlem Avenue, because put it in the central business district, get on, propose that as well. Because it's not, it's not, if it's, if there's no, if there's nothing wrong with putting a panic room on Harlem Avenue, then let's put it, then let's put it in the central business district, let's put it down the.
We are not putting anything anywhere. The private sector will decide.
What I'm saying is that let's include, that's what I'm saying. If we're gonna, if we put it in, is put it in these.
So close to library.
Trust, trust, I mean, sorry, trustee Gisa, if you look at the map.
I understand that, but I'm saying we should include the other business districts in Riverside.
Well, you're right, but the, the, the maps counting 1,000 feet of the school takes out much of the central business district.
I would, I would say 1,500 feet is the right distance. The same distance it is from this, between dispensaries.
It man effectually leaves the, just south of Burlington, all the way down around.
I'm not analyzing where it leaves. The other thing I would do is I would also include in-home daycares, which is also listed. So in-home daycares that are registered, both in Berwin and in Riverside, should also be included in schools, because those have children in them. And another question I have for, for attorney Molina is, does the school district building at the corner of Quincy and Harlem, is that included as part of the school district, technically?
No, not if it has children.
No, it's not? Given that the school property is curiously.
School, schools off and on, single-family houses, they assemble property. It's not a school.
But I'd say include it all, and 1,500 feet, keep it consistent.
Hey, the discussion, I, I just listened to the discussion of this buffer separation at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I think it's kind of a, is maybe a strawman is the right terminology. Um, the only place it really applies is Long Common and Harlem. So let's look at Long Common and Harlem. Um, you know, would any business located in Long Common and Harlem impact Morton High School?
There has to be some evidence for this, this buffer requirement that you're pushing for. What's the evidence for this?
We don't have that.
Well, if, if I could finish, um, you know, it's separated by highway, um, it's a different school district than the prop, subject properties are, are, are in. Um, the entryway is even further away on, I think it's Home Avenue. Um, yeah, there's a chance that someone walking to school to Morton might pass by Long Common and Harlem. They'd be on the other side of the street, for one thing. Um, I just, as a practical matter, I don't see that as being, uh, uh, an impact on that particular school. So why, now, if you wanna take it a step further and say it should be 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet from a residential district, or any park, or anything where children might be, well, then let's, you should just move to opt-out, because that's what we would be doing. So let's, you know.
Wait, aren't parks and libraries listed? No, to my imagination, because that resides. Parks are? Well, they should be. I mean, playgrounds aren't listed.
What it says is pre-existing public or private school.
And to trustee Evans' point, when, when I was at the, at the, the property there the other day, I was standing in front of the, the building, and the only thing I could see was the, like, the top edge of the sign for Morton. Um, you couldn't see anything else because of all the traffic that was going up and down Harlem. And again, to go back to what trust, to what director Apt was pointing out, no signage, nothing that can, can, can have the depiction of a marijuana plant or any kind of paraphernalia. It's gonna be a building, as the commissioner at EDC commented on in Oak Park, she walked by it for years and never even knew what it was. So this notion that somehow, uh, it's going to negatively impact kids, you know, walking past it. And let's keep in mind that, that these are, this is not the only one that's gonna be anywhere in Illinois. You know, we are going to have these, these establishments throughout Illinois. So this notion that, that we need, you're not gonna shield the idea that these establishments exist.
No, but I think, I think having a, children walk across that street every day to go, from, my kids, twice a week, three times a week, cross that street to go to the library. There, we just had, uh, one of the residents on Berkeley say that she's a stay-at-home mom, and she watches kids up and down that road. To, to say that the kids are not going to walk past these businesses and understand what's going on in them, especially when they see people coming in and out of them, the, the residents that I heard said they were concerned about people walking in and out, being around those buil, businesses, and having their kids encounter them. So that is, I think, a valid concern that, that these buffers address.
So, I, I, I don't know, were you, did you live here when the Cork was there, on that strip mall?
When the what?
The Cork. There was, uh, there was a, a liquor store. Where, where the, where the dentist is now. There was a liquor store there. The Sidco now sells liquor, cigarettes, rolling papers, as you point out. The 7-Eleven does. Um, the, uh, I think it's the Exxon does. Kids walk by those all the time. Do you have any concerns?
And those are gas stations that happen to sell liquor. They're not a one-shop establishment.
So you are drawing a qualitative distinction between an alcohol, alcohol sales and cannabis sales?
There is a difference. I do, I do agree with that, but I also agree that those businesses are there to sell gas. They're there to sell hoho's. They're there to sell other things than other, just that. So when a child walks by that, that gas station, they're not like, oh, that's a liquor store. They are thinking of it as a gas station. And there's a big difference, and the people who are coming and going out of that are, are not just coming for liquor.
The Cork was a liquor store.
But they're gonna know, look, they're gonna know. A couple of things. I have a question for primarily Doug and Ben, because you've proposed to me quite a bit. I feel like some of us walked in, Liz and I obviously, tonight, knowing the way we were gonna go, based on the emails that we received, from, again, as a group. And I feel like when people spoke, I became more convicted with it, which, which, I feel supported my hubris, but maybe it didn't. I don't know, we're gonna get fined or whatever, we'll see what happens. The, the question, though, I have a couple things. You guys both were adamant against the gaming, for a lot of the same reasons that, like, like, I, I remember someone saying, well, boy, if you've gotta hide it in the back room at the Choo Choo or Molly's, then why do you need it? And like, that's exactly what we're doing. We're saying there's gonna be no windows, no signage, you know, gate, this, that. And I guess, what I'm under, not understanding, and please, I, I apologize by putting you on the spot, but I think the people at home wanna know, because they're asking us this, right? What is the difference of giving our residents a referendum for that, in your opinions, right, versus this? Because I, I would argue that we'll get about 30, I don't know where 100,000 came from, I would argue that we'll get about $30,000 in annual revenue from this. I'll gladly buy the lot from Riverside for the $300,000 that we bought it for, and I'll put a friggin' ice cream shop there and make $25,000. God, that's too much. But with that said, why, why are you guys so opposed, and I'm not gonna tell you about Ben and Doug, it's just personally, for the, for the, why are you guys opposed to that, but, and, and, and willing to give the, the residents a chance to go to referendum, versus giving them a chance on this one? I, I, I don't understand it, so I'm just trying to understand it. Like, are those, no, Chris, not you, I'm just being a Doug and Ben.
Why not me? I, I stood up there every time we talked about gambling, and in fact.
But they were in the boards, I'm asking the board.
No, but, I mean, in fact, we did not want you to go to referendum with gambling, because it was clear that we didn't want gambling here. Now, you're pushing for a referendum.
It's clear that they don't want, they don't want the statues here.
Right, right, but you already, right, that's true. That's true. That's true, but we've already had a referendum on whether to allow cannabis. You can't say, I want, yes, I wanna legalize cannabis. You can't, you can't say, I, I wanna legalize cannabis, but not in my town. I disagree.
The issue, the issue, the issue we're talking about is the buffer. So that is the issue that we're talking about. But you can ask it.
But it's gonna determine how I feel about the buffer.
I, I was, I didn't support.
Gaming is a predatory business, and it had no business being here. Cannabis sales, we're talking about retail.
I would say cannabis is a predatory business. They sell gummies.
We're talking about retail.
They sell, they sell, they sell chocolate. That was your fear. And it drove you to stand up here every day and tell us your feelings.
No, it was the fact that, um, no, it was the fact that consumers would make no money off of gambling. It was a predatory business. That's not the same as cannabis retail.
Okay, let's, let's get back.
The best, the best question answered, he has the highest.
No, that's a rhetorical question, and we don't have to answer it.
It's not, but it determines the buffer.
I wasn't for the referendum.
So were you, were you against gaming, correct?
I was, I wasn't for the referendum.
Were you opposed to gaming?
Yes.
For what reason?
See, you're trying to conflate two things that the.
I'm not, these people wanna know.
Okay, you have a question, but you don't wanna hear an answer.
But you're spinning the answer.
But I'm not the one, I'm the one.
You're spinning the answer.
Because it's not what you wanna hear?
No, it's not what it's, I wanna, I wanna get the answer to the question.
Okay. I, well, you already heard it. Sixty-seven percent of the residents in this town voted to legalize marijuana.
Correct.
Seventy-six percent of the people in this town voted against video gambling. The residents of this village understand the difference, even if you don't.
Ben, that is a completely dwarfed sense of, sense of, sense of logic right there. Sixty-seven percent voted to legalize marijuana, not selling Riverside.
The chair trustee.
Right, come on. This is a joke.
The question I have, and, and, you know, going back to our July meeting, um, I'm trying to separate if this issue is one of the people who are concerned about the Title Max site. Um, and I'm, I, you know, trustee Peters mentioned, what, 38 or 39 emails. Um, I'm not moved by 38 or 50 people coming out on a, on a, on a Thursday night, where there's other people, you know, who are for it, who are expressed for it, and have gone on with their lives. So I, I, I.
So I, you know, I. Order, please.
We've gotten, you know, we've gotten the feedback, we've gotten the sense.
No, you don't get to interrupt our meeting.
Someone needs to respond to that. You're not moved by 30 or 50 people taking time away from their children, away from their families, away from their jobs, to come out here and tell you how we feel about a subject, because there are other people at home watching the football game who may feel differently?
Because there's.
I mean, that's one of the most absurd things that I, we've heard tonight, out of all the absurd things that we've heard tonight. How many people found out about this this week? This week?
Yesterday.
Yeah. I mean, come on. And we're here, and we're telling you how we feel. And I'll tell you that, you know, you, you keep talking about liquor, but you have completely zoned out of the central business district, any cannabis business, and I wanna know why. You don't want it by your house, by your house, by your house, by your house. We know that that's the reason, because those children you care about, and those property values, and those things you have a problem with, but you, you don't have a problem with it by other houses. But let me tell you, a lot of the people who live on the streets that you're proposing to put this on are not just residents, we're business owners in this community. This is going to affect other businesses in this community. And when you drive out people who live here and make their businesses in here, you are driving revenue out of this community. This is a false discussion, where you're talking about treating like, why, like, and we all agree with that. We teach our kids that. You treat like things alike, but you're not. You have zoned it completely out of the commercial business district, and there is absolutely a reason for that, because you do not think it is the same thing as other substances. We're not gonna stand here and just listen to this absurdity. You wanna, you wanna talk about it? Talk about it. Hear us. Have a town hall meeting, have you all up there, let us talk, let the chief talk, let your attorneys talk to us, we will have a conversation. But we're not gonna be insulted by what you're doing here tonight. We will be loud, and you will not be able to vote on this. It is not happening. Better listen up.
Alex, do you think this is funny? I've been watching your.
Order, please. Order, please. Order, please.
I do wanna hear what people have to say. I mean, I agree with you, I do wanna hear what you have to say, and I'm very proud of that everyone came out of their day to miss a Bears game, or whatever else I had, to listen. I wanna hear what you have to say. I really do. And I certainly hope that you would have taken the time to write to your state legislature so that it didn't come into our backyards. Did anyone do that? Show of hands? One, there you go.
Okay.
Shame on you all.
If you cannot, if you.
Mrs. Vasek, that's a deal.
Alex, please. If you cannot maintain order, you'll be asked to leave. We are going to finish this meeting in a civilized way. Ma'am?
We all have given feelings. You say that your feelings on it, it was a sense to that, that your feelings were important. We could argue all this stuff all the time. I mean, all night long, for weeks. You say you think there's been adequate people that know about it. This isn't an adequate group. I'm asking you sincerely, put it to a vote. We're not gonna know, you know, you think this, you think this, you think this, you think this. We're not gonna know until you get the whole town informed, and the whole town the opportunity, which is what America is about, to vote for it. I understand you feel like you're in a, in a money crunch. There are very few places around us that have jumped on that vote. There are our closest neighbors who are waiting, they're polling their citizens, they're gonna vote next year, they're gonna go for referendum. I mean, the only one I may be concerned about is Lyons from the past history, you know, and that's another whole night of talking, but I don't understand why this is, this, this, you said, this is not, this is not, we gotta do this now. I was in college, I almost, I bought Waterless Cooper, because I had to have it then, and then it was like, the next day, it was remorse, like, well, I don't need that, I don't have the money. I understand your angst, I do. But you're making us feel like this is for nothing, that you've already made up your minds. But the other part of it is, that, I told you, I talked to many people in my neighborhood, way far from that. It wouldn't affect us being in our backyard. And I talked to other people I know around town, and I'm telling you, I don't care whether you have it on the paper, and I don't care whether you broadcast it, and I don't care if it's on your news site, none of those people knew about it, and that's not right. Your job is to make sure we all know what's going on, and if it's something this important, that we all have the say to whether we want it or not. And if you're right, that 68% think it's wonderful, then you'll get your dispensary next year.
Thank you. The question.
Well, I mean, I guess all I can say is, in First Division, you have to talk to different people than me. You didn't come by and talk to me, but I talked to.
I distributed things, I didn't, I didn't knock, I'm yours.
Okay, please, please.
It was during the day, I knew people were out. But my point is not, I talked to everybody. My point is, there's more. There's more people that don't know that have the right to know.
And I didn't mean to be dismissive of the people who came out today. My point is, is that there are many others who are not here today. There are people who have talked, people who have raised the issues, and, you know, again, it's, it's a complex issue. I'd like to get back to the 1,000-feet discussion, the clarification on the central business district. If we are gonna have it 1,000 feet from a school, because of Central and because of St. Mary's, that does restrict all of the central business district. If the suggestion is that we don't have any restrictions to schools, that would bring bring it all within the central business district. So, you know, I don't understand the comment on not having it in the central business district, but if we are going to have five hundred feet or a thousand feet, we have to recognize, we count all the schools. So, that's, that's where we're at.
But, well, where we're at, if we can attempt to get back to where we're at, is the recommendation that you have before you from the Planning and Zoning Commission is to have this in the B-1C. The recommendation with regard to distance, with regard to adult-use cannabis distribution, dispensing organizations, is five hundred feet. Currently, as you heard from Director Abt, there would be no distance requirement for medical cannabis dispensing as of January or as of July this year. So, the question is, do you want to keep the five hundred feet for adult use? And if you do, do you want to add five hundred feet to medical? Or do you want to change the distance requirement for either or both of those?
They should both be changed to fifteen hundred feet.
I think they should both stick at five hundred.
Five hundred feet.
I like a thousand.
What's the feeling over here?
Five hundred feet.
And you said fifteen hundred?
Well, I'll tell you what. If Ed will go a thousand, and you'll go a thousand, we'll lead up to the president.
Okay, I'll do a thousand.
Would you like to make that motion?
No, I don't want to make that. You mean, like, to change it to a thousand feet?
Well, it's, here is five hundred, so-
But he has to alter his motion.
He, nobody's made a motion. Nobody's made a motion.
Well, actually, we do have, we, we-
Yes.
Originally, there was a motion that both was presented.
Yeah, so the motion, but the motion that was presented is five hundred.
Right.
Right.
And still pending.
Right. So, if you-
So, who has to alter his emotion to make it a thousand?
Anybody can move to amend the ordinance as presented.
Yeah, I mean, what I would suggest is trying to maybe reach a consensus on the key points and then make an appropriate motion. And some of the people who may favor a larger amount, you know, they can say that, but you're probably still going to want to vote against the ordinance.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that's why it might be prudent, just to-
Just to take a straw vote?
Yeah. It sounds like we already did. We have-
Right, so you're five hundred, five hundred-
Five hundred, five hundred, one thousand, and the two favorite-
A thousand, a thousand, five hundred.
I'm a five hundred.
I'm a five hundred.
Are you a five hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, what about with regard to medical? Same thing?
Same thing.
Same thing. Five hundred, okay. So, can you make that change, attorney?
Okay, five hundred. So, just for people who's not understanding what I have on, because our board isn't particularly concerned that you're understanding what's going on, they are voting to have these cannabis dispensaries, medical or recreational, five hundred feet from schools with no limitation from libraries, parks, daycares, or any other types of facilities.
No, it's wrong.
By the way, I was told that the Riverside TV broadcast is going out. I don't know if that's part of your open record of the meeting process, but it is not playing, I'm not sure why, to your constituents who are watching this at home.
It actually came back up. My computer went down, and it's not back up.
So, are there, are there other changes?
I have one. I have one. So, to me, this, this should definitely be not a permitted use. This should be a special use. Our neighbors up North Oak Park who have a medical dispensary, who are going to be having recreational dispensaries, they are, they are going with this to be a special use. They recognize the need for a special use here. This should be a special use. It should not be a permitted use.
Mr. Pollock?
It's a, it's a good question, permitted use or special use. The Planning and Zoning Commission spent some time on that question. I think, though, that it's important to understand what a special use is and what it is not. Special use does not mean that a village, a municipality can arbitrarily deny, based on public opinion. Can I, it's essentially, a special use is a permitted use with a public hearing process that allows a municipality to add conditions that are unique to the location of the use. If you look at our zone, our B-1C zoning ordinance, zoning district, the uses that are special uses are generally uses that have outdoor activities that are unique. Drive-through windows, daycares, where there's often outdoor playgrounds, financial institutions with drive-through facilities, gas stations, restaurants with drive-through facilities, outdoor recreation. None of those are just, virtually every retail, I believe every, in the B-1C, every retail store that's self-contained in a building is a permitted use. I think if we arbitrarily make this a special use, the integrity of our community will be brought into question, and I think that would be a questionable requirement. Plus, as I said, it doesn't mean you could just arbitrarily say no to it because the neighbors don't want it near them. It means, special use again is really a permitted use that has the opportunity for a village to mitigate the impacts of the use on its surroundings because of the unique nature of the use. I don't see a retail cannabis store as fitting that definition of a special use, so I agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission that it should be a permitted use.
Other comments?
I'd like to speak on that issue.
Let's, let's save the trustees everything first.
I think the mitigating piece that you just talked about is exactly what these residents have talked about. And I'm concerned that we talk about a special use as being, that we are talking about putting in something that has had such, that has had such opposition, and again, not allowing for the public hearing once this, once this business actually goes in. And I recognize that we are not beholden to their, to the public's opinion of that, and that we can't use that as a tool to say yay or nay. But they should be entitled to talk about the special mitigating circumstances of that particular location. And if they're intimately knowledgeable of that location, they will be the ones that can provide information that would be relevant to that special use determination. They're, they're in the best position to provide that for this. So, that's, I think it has to be a special use. Oak Park recognizes the need for this to be a special use. This is not just an average business. There are special requirements and special, all of the regulations that, you know, President Sells has talked about being in force. All of those things have special requirements that will need to be addressed on a lot-by-lot basis. And that is why this needs to be special use.
Just a follow.
I understand that argument. I think you could apply that to any retail business, that neighbors should get to say what retail businesses locate next door to them. That's not the law, in my opinion. You know, property owners have a reasonable expectation that there's a list of permitted uses that they could put on their property without having to go through a public hearing process. If we want to make it a special use, and this is really your argument, I believe, for special use, you have to say, here's what, here's a, a impact that we can't control through the various use restrictions that we already have in place in this ordinance. We can't control it because it's unknown, like a drive-through window.
Like traffic?
Traffic. We, we can mitigate that for, a retail cannabis store traffic would, would be similar to a Starbucks, probably. And our existing parking regulations and traffic regulations are going to address that. If they don't, we need to look at our parking and traffic regulations, not our list of land uses in B-1C district. So, I just, I respect the opinion of special use, and I know a lot of villages take that because it's an easy way out. You just make it a special use, and you kick the can down the road, and you delay making a decision. But I think it, it, it's not the right decision. And it's, again, I'll just conclude by saying I agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission in that regard.
Ben, I just ask a question. What's the parking ratio for this?
Um, what was it?
I believe there's one space for every three hundred square feet.
Yeah, one, two hundred, one, for every two hundred fifty to three hundred square feet.
That's way under park. That's, that's just way under park. I mean, it's typically where it's out, and maybe a little more.
Director Abt can show you the table that she used to calculate that.
I know, but it's just under park.
Okay, so, with regard to, you want to speak to the permitted versus special?
I wouldn't allow, I mean, this gentleman should speak to it.
Well, no, he wasn't-
And I could speak to it, too.
He was, he was-
He was having a nice conversation with you, and you were actually responding to him, which was a refreshing change of pace.
He was, he was addressing parking. Did you want to speak to permitted and special use?
They're related, aren't they?
You tell me you're the one that wants to speak.
I'm not actually the specialist on this. We are looking to our trustees to make informed, non-arbitrary, capricious decisions, because when they make arbitrary and capricious decisions, they get sued, and that costs the village a lot of money. And what we've heard tonight is a whole lot of arbitrary and capricious, and a whole lot of risk for the village. I will say that it's a whole different issue of whether, what this should be, but it should absolutely be special use. Special use allows the village to maintain certain control over the types of businesses that are going into specific locations. And special use does permit the village to adjust to certain conditions. This is an Illinois licensed business, and that means that Riverside largely will not have a lot of control over managing how that business, how that business is in compliance with, with, with restrict, with obligations for the business, how it's being enforced. And the more that we relax that, the more that we cede to the state to be the oversight for this business instead of Riverside. So, now we've said, hey, bring your cannabis business in, which, by the way, we think is exactly like packaged liquor, but we're not going to put downtown. And we want to put it five hundred feet from schools because we're worried about Berwyn putting it five hundred feet from schools, which is absolutely ridiculous, by the way, because Riverside here is the predatory jurisdiction that's proposing to put a cannabis dispensary within five hundred feet of one of Berwyn's schools and one of Berwyn's libraries. But we think that's good because we're still really focused on whether Berwyn's going to get this revenue or not. And so, now we want to say, and let's let the state police this business, and we'll take a hands-off approach to it. And, you know, parking will work itself out. We're not too concerned about that. Community impact will work itself out. We're not too concerned about that. You know, the impact on property owners around the area will work itself out. We're not too concerned about that. We're not going to exercise any of the legitimate powers that we, as a village, have to make sure that this completely new, completely uncertain, unknown-risk business, high-risk business, is actually operating properly in our village, because we need thirty thousand dollars a year for it.
I would like to know that trustee Evans has been texting and not paying attention to all to what this woman is going to say.
I'm sorry. I've listened to everything. I'm checking on my children. Is that okay?
So, with regard to the permitted versus-
Yep.
-special. I mean, I struggle with this as well, with the permitted. But where I come down is, the, the two things that, that we would most want as conditions with regard to special use would be the cooperative, cooperative agreement with the police and the ability to handle parking without having to be called. Both of those things have been codified. So, the, the two things that we would, that we would want from a special use are, are actually-
Public hearing is another one. The notice functionality, that is another one that I would want from the special use.
But I, but I, but I take trustee Pollack's point. The difference between permitted and, and special has, has to go with regard to some impact at the, like the-
Absolutely.
Like the daycare or something like that. And just, you know, just a short list, packaged liquor stores, body piercing studios, craft distilleries, brew pubs, microbreweries, distilleries, tattoo parlors, precious metal dealers, those are all permitted uses. I don't, I, I can't see a qualitative distinction between, to be made between, you know, an upscale cannabis retailer and those.
And I see them as different? So, right, that's where we disagree.
Could I ask a question? Since you said you don't see a qualitative difference between an upscale, not sure what that is, cannabis dispensary and other types of businesses, what, what does a cooperative policing agreement mean? Do these other types of businesses have cooperative policing agreements with the Village of Riverside?
Chief Witzel, would you like to describe the cooperative policing? Actually, President Sells, we, if we get the chief up, could have, we have expanded sort of his overall plan and study of best practices as well as part of this discussion.
Good evening, President Sells, board members, and residents. Yes, so, what I would be looking for as chief would be a cooperative agreement that we could proactively police without complaints either from neighbors or businesses. So, for example, those agreements are common in, I've testified at other planning meetings, those agreements are common in communities that have malls. Malls are private property. Police department enters into an agreement so that the ordinances, parking regulations, traffic enforcement, and criminal enforcement can be done, where the police officers can take initiative without being called by the business, without the business being the complainant in some cases, and allow the police access to the property, which in, in all these cases is a privately-owned business. And I would, I would seek that we would get an agreement with whatever, no matter what location, if, if the board approves, whatever, whatever location that would be. And some of those items that I would be looking for would be traffic flow, security, parking, lighting, delivery of the product that would be there, alarms, signage, possible gate if there's a parking lot, that whatever location would be selected, a cooperation agreement, as we're talking about with the police, a video feed to the police station from the establishment, agreement for the proactive policing. We'd like to work with the security company. If the, if that cannabis distributing place is required to have a private security guard, I would like to have input on that. And I would like to be involved with Director Abt's blessing, and the manager's blessing, on something that's called, for lack of a better word, it's, it's being involved in the designing. It's crime prevention through environmental design. What that really means is, I'd like to be involved in what type of shrubbery they have, how the, how the place is viewed, how the police can look in there, what goes on there. It's a common practice that's done with Seven-Elevens, fast-food places. They, a lot of times, have ordinances that allow the police to be involved in the design phase from a crime prevention perspective. So, that's what some, what I would be looking for in this type of business, and I would be looking for them to have a written agreement with the village for that.
So, those, those requirements are in the draft?
Yes.
It's in the security plan that's required to be presented. It requires Chief Witzel's approval of that.
So, I, yeah, and I would feel comfortable, I would, I would really want to have them, I know they have a requirement through the state, so we could do that. But to address our residents, I'd like that company to meet with me personally if the board goes that direction, and I would like my staff directly involved. I know the state police have a greater oversight, but to make sure that our residents know that the local police department is involved, I'd like to get involved from the beginning and get that additional caveat into any agreement.
And that is required. As part of the preliminary processes, they have to submit what's called a security plan, and you have the right to approve that.
Chief, ask a question?
Yes.
Why do we need all the increased security? Nobody knows this dispensary.
Well, some of it is state requirement, like, like the attorney said, some is actual state requirement. Others is that I want to be able to make sure, you know, every business that I've had in Riverside isn't always cooperating with those. For a fact, I've gone to, my detectives have gone to businesses before and tried to seek video evidence from crimes, and there are just some people that, it's a private business, right? They just don't want to share their information with the police for whatever reason. So, I'd like to have a cooperative agreement through the state that says you must do that, that they can't deny us, Act. They can't deny me video footage. They can't deny me a feed to my police station or to my squad cars where the laptop computers are in. Not that they would, but I, I feel more comfortable being able to even turn over a report to the board and the residents and said, you know, we met with this company, and here's what we demanded. Yes, the state has this report, and, and they have to, they have to submit this security plan. We have to approve it. But I also want to come back to this elected board and to our residents and say, I sat in and had direct contact. So, to the extent that I can have an influence on it, I would like to be able to do that.
But if it's not a special use, don't we include all the other businesses as well?
No. I know, not, not, not to my knowledge.
Why don't we want to, as I was saying? Why don't we want to as opposed to having such special use?
Well, some of the businesses don't have the capability to do that. You know, like, like the, the law calls for what kind of canvas system they have to have. The law calls for what kind of secure vestibule they have to have. The law calls for lighting is a, is a, a bear.
Why do you, why do you feel the law calls for all this?
Because that's what, so in the, what my understanding is, my understanding is when I was in Springfield, that when they were crafting this legislation, people that were opposed to it, these were some of the negotiations that went on for that law to be adopted in Springfield at, at, at a, at a state level. So the state had these provisions put in from, from people in Springfield, not local people, that were testifying down in Springfield. And this is what we would want if the cannabis distribution sites are open. So the legislators included that as part of the negotiations for the overall bill.
So just so we can move on. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
So all of these protections were built in, so.
So is there any other business that has a cooperative policing agreement with the Village of Riverside?
We do have, we do have parking agreements so that we can do parking enforcement on private property. Those businesses that want us to come in and issue tickets.
So there's no other business that has the, the type of cooperative enforcement agreement that's proposed?
Not to the extent that I, I address to the board, no. We do have parking agreements.
Okay, so the issue-
Is that because a cannabis dispensary is a different kind of business?
So we're going to-
I, I, I think we're trying to have as open and full of a conversation tonight as possible, Mr. Sells, because it was decided that the village residents could not speak about this at a, at a later time. Is it because a cannabis dispensary is a different kind of business?
Well, I, I wanted those provisions because some of those were denoted in the state legislation and the, the company does have to come to the local police chief with a, what they call a security plan, and we do have to approve that. But I want to be able to have the ability to add or delete from that, which that, that doesn't say, but I want to be able to make suggestions beyond what a, what a cannabis distribution site would give us. My assumption is that they would, a cannabis distribution site would hire a professional security company to survey their property and they would prepare the report. And I want to be able to look at that and address it.
So the issue, yes.
And, and my understanding is many, if not all, of the cannabis kind of companies that are currently operating medical cannabis dispensaries are owned and their parent company stock is publicly traded. So as the chief walked us through this in the past couple of meetings, you know, knowing how publicly traded companies operate and understanding sometimes they have different priorities than, say, a local business owner, I think it's very important to have an upfront understanding than what the chief may be otherwise be able to negotiate, say, with, with Saw Millie or, or with LeVara or, or some of the other businesses in town where they're bound by that. So you don't have the issues of, again, these companies making policy decisions that, that all of a sudden renege on what we would otherwise have with a regularly-held business. So that, that I think is some of the underlying rationale, at least it's my mind as we were talking through it.
Can I ask one question about the boundaries? I'm going to go back to that real quickly. So we're at 500 right now, but alcohol's 100 from schools, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we're comparing it to, should we just, should we just make it 100 feet and call it a day for the cannabis dispensary as well?
I think we already voted.
Right, but I mean-
You can open it back up, right?
Right? I mean, is that, is that, if it doesn't matter, it's comparable to that?
If you want to make that motion.
We can lower it a little or two, right?
Yeah.
Well, you might sell.
The board, so I don't feel about that.
If you want to make that motion, you can, but we're talking about permitted versus special at this point.
I mean, I'm going to get to that anyway.
Right, okay. So did you want, did you want to make a motion to?
I do. I move to make this a special use.
I'll second that.
Further discussion on that point? Please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Galgos.
No.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye, no.
I'm sorry?
No.
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Pollack.
No.
Are there further changes?
I have one more. You're going to have to bear with me tonight. I don't, I want, I guess it's a question. I don't understand why this doesn't, I've raised it several times, the library page. No one has answered for me why we have this 500-foot barrier with schools but not with libraries. I don't, I don't see a distinction at the medical level, at least previously, the, the state never saw a distinction. So I want to know why libraries are not included and potentially even parks, I guess, that places where these students, these, these children are going to be.
Did attorney Malia?
Yes.
Did the-
Sorry, I was just checking up.
That's okay. Did the cannabis, the medical cannabis, did that include libraries?
Not to my knowledge.
I think it did.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, what medical did?
I'm fairly certain it did.
We can, I've got the statute. Well, right now it doesn't include anything because they eliminated it as of August 9th.
Yeah, and I'm saying previously.
And the, and the current cannabis act is not included.
Because I didn't pull libraries out of the air, it's an error. I got it from somewhere.
Yeah, the current cannabis, cannabis act is not including libraries.
Effective August 9th, yeah, but the previous one had distance requirements. It was 1,500 feet.
A thousand feet, I thought, from-
A thousand feet. I'm sorry, I've got so many feet.
Yeah, understandable. I mean, here's the thing, like, no one's answered my question. So I, I don't, please, go ahead.
Mr. Pollack.
I, I have trouble with 500-foot buffer from a school. I really don't see the purpose of it when we don't impose that on other retail establishments. I guess the reason I'm supporting that is because it was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. If trustee Jisa or someone else wants to make a motion to, to reduce it or eliminate it, I would probably support that. But-
I was talking about why libraries are-
Right, and so it applies to libraries as well.
So it should apply, you agree that it should apply to libraries?
No, I don't. I, I don't see the need for a buffer at all.
Okay. But if we are going to have a buffer, why would it not be consistent across those different types of activities?
I would ask the Planning and Zoning Commission why they may-
They didn't, they didn't really answer.
I know.
That's the problem.
I know.
And I haven't heard one person explain why that would be different.
Right. I, I'm just telling you my explanation. My explanation is, one, I don't think there needs to be a buffer at all. Two, the 500-foot buffer is meaningless because it doesn't, from a school. So I, I don't object to it because it doesn't have any impact. So going back to number one, the fact that I don't think there needs to be a buffer for a retail business from a school or a park, that's why I've not-
Okay. But that doesn't address the consistency problem.
Can I make a motion to include libraries, parks, and daycares within the 500-foot buffer?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to include libraries, parks, daycares, both in home and out of home, in the 500 square foot buffer with schools where the students go after, and rec departments. Like, we should add that as well, to use a buffer for half a million dollars.
And I'll second that motion.
And that's a 500-foot buffer around all of those?
We'll just include it with the schools.
Okay.
Simply they have-
Could I?
Ask that we start with the libraries and then expand the motion after the first vote?
So he, he's asking to separate, right?
That's what I'm, that's what I am asking of the trustees.
He has a right to do that. That's if he would support one but not all as a group.
So you want to start with libraries?
Sure, I'll start with libraries. I make a motion to include libraries with the schools.
And I'll second that one.
So the only comment I would make would be to agree with trustee Pollack is that there's, I don't see any rationale for it. The IML draft ordinance that you referenced favorably earlier does not include libraries. Any other discussion on that point?
I just would like to start hearing some evidence for these, just, what is the evidence that this is going to make an impact? Just children walking across the street, that doesn't harm them. What's the, what's the evidence that you're using to base this motion on?
So you would say, I'm, I'm asking for consistency across these different types of businesses. So are you saying you don't want any buffer?
No, I'm, I'm fine with 500 feet.
Okay. So that's why I'm asking, we should have a consistency across these types of businesses. If we're going to have a 500-foot buffer with schools, we should also have a 500-foot buffer with, we can separate it out, libraries, and potentially very similar other types of, of activities, of, of businesses or of, they're not businesses, they're services to the community.
Please call the roll.
No, I'm sorry, if I could have one more question.
I just want to make sure I understand. I don't know if director App is still here.
Yeah.
The libraries we have would be the Berwyn Library, Riverside Library. Am I missing anything else?
Is North Riverside there further away than? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so those are the two on the table. Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
So this is the vote just on libraries?
Correct.
Okay.
To amend, to add libraries to-
The 500-foot.
500.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Galgos.
No.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Pollack.
No.
So it's-
We have a tie.
Three to three, so we need to know.
I'd also like to make a motion to include playgrounds in the 500-foot buffer.
I'll second.
Are we going to vote on parks, daycare, or rec department, which was previously listed?
Director App, do you have any-
You can do it independently.
Information as to whether there are any playgrounds that would be relevant to the B-1C?
The first one that comes to mind would be Harrington Park. Would impact some of the, the B-1 area to the south on Long.
And Patriots Park.
Sure, Patriots Park probably would.
Let me over-
Questionable. Borderline.
Does it matter? Should we just vote? Or is it not?
I'd like to understand.
Yeah, I, I don't- I understand the desire not to cut out businesses, but I also feel like this need, you know, cut out opportunities for businesses to move into various commercial districts. I think that's why, you know, your concern is. But I don't know why that factors in or should be the only factor in this decision. The factor should be whether or not we want this to be within 500 feet of any park. That's, that's the choice we're making.
In my mind, you know, I thought the original motion was playgrounds. So now we're expanding it to the entire park. And, and I'm, I'm-
Got it.
You know, if, if it's playground areas, you know, there's defined areas at Harrington, there's defined areas at Turtle Park, there's defined areas at Patriots Park. You know, I'm just trying to understand, you know, it's every park. Does that include all the green space? Does that inclu-, I mean, I, I, you know, I just don't know what, what we're voting on, if it includes all, all the parks in what we're defining. I mean, Riverside is full of green space. And if, if we're going to say, you know, it's 500 feet for every green space-
Understandable.
That really doesn't make a lot of sense.
So what is your motion? Playgrounds or parks?
Playgrounds. I, I would consider baseball, little soccer field playgrounds for kids to play. I mean, a common area, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, a triangle park, I wouldn't be defined that. But I would think that Harrington Park is a playground for sure. My kids play soccer there. They swing and play baseball.
Staff is really doing measurements.
Patriots Park is questionable at 500 feet. So that one comes into play. Patriots Park. And this is very rough measurements.
But I, I take it that the same, your same argument trustee Pollack would apply to these situations, right?
Yes.
And trustee Evans, that there has been a showing of negative impact.
Patriots Park is our park, my park with my kids. And that is like, we can't see Harlem Avenue at all from that park.
So it seems to-
That's not the point, Crystal.
But 500 feet is 500 feet.
That's not the point.
It is to me. I'm sorry you don't understand.
It's not to me.
I'm sorry you don't understand.
I, I live on Berkeley Road. I get it. I get it.
I know, I got it.
Good.
The motions.
To vote?
Yep.
Is this on playgrounds, then?
What is your?
Playgrounds.
Playgrounds. All parks.
What defines it where kids play, right? Not, not, not a category, where there's, where there's-
Wait, wait.
Sorry, where there's equipment for children to play.
So the playground area.
Playground, playground.
So not all Harrington Park.
Well, if there's a soccer field or baseball, I would include that personally. But I mean, but the playground area is, is right there anyways. It doesn't matter, it's right on Harlem.
Well, it, it defines where that 500 feet starts. So I want to, again, I want to-
Sure, sure. We'll go with the playground area.
Okay, so just, I mean, I think what's going on here is a, with due respect-
I'm hoping that someone's going to agree with us.
Is, is a little bit of gamesmanship. It's an attempt to try to cut out a specific space that, that is, to your point, can't even be seen. So I just make that point that I think this is, you know, a little bit of-
Can I proceed?
It's terribly inauthentic.
For me, it's bottom line, people in the crowd.
I think when trustee Hannan says, okay, what is that going to encompass, that's exactly the gamesmanship that you're talking about. If we can't, if, if we're talking about originally it was a thousand feet and then, oh no, that Morton, that means that that title max isn't available anymore, let's shrink it to 500, we've been talking about gamesmanship for a very long time. Playgrounds, right?
Playgrounds.
Directed playgrounds.
Equipment provided by the village for kids to play in.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Galgos.
No.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
No.
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Pollack.
No.
Anything else? Any other proposed changes?
I have one last one. I apologize for everyone. I would like to make a motion to not allow cannabis dispensers within 50 feet of a private residence.
I'll second that.
50 feet, by the way.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Galgos.
No.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
No.
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Pollack.
No.
Anything else? Any others suggested changes? Did you have something?
Yeah, I do. It's very clear. You say it's clear what's going on with all these motions. It's very clear what's going on. The vacant Title Max is your location. You've got your eye on it. That's where it's going to be. I want to know what's going to be done beautification-wise to that location, trees, cul-de-sac, to make that a safer area. Are you going to revisit the cul-de-sac that was totally shut down on Berkeley Road?
We said earlier-
You're, you will absolutely revisit the cul-de-sac.
We vote, we voted on it.
What kind of a, what kind of a gate?
We voted on it.
Where, where will the gate be? I need, I didn't hear. I need to know.
We don't, we don't, we're going to have our traffic safety engineer look at it and come back with-
Because you had the traffic safety engineer look at it when the cul-de-sac-
No, our staff did that, then.
The staff did that.
We're going to have a traffic safety engineer look at it and suggest possible alternatives with regard to traffic and parking on Berkeley. Any other suggested changes?
I, I do have a question. Did the police and fire board commission actually hold a meeting on this decision? And if not, why not?
This has no, no bearing on what they do.
Oh, okay. So this decision- Oh, okay. So this decision has no bearing on the police?
Are you referring to the Harrington Board?
No, the, the commission, the police.
They handle hiring.
Uh, they handle only hiring?
Yes.
Okay. And is it consistent still with where you've ended up tonight that no additional police resources would be needed for, for the conclusion that no additional police resources would be needed to support this zoning change? Is that still the position of this board?
No.
It's not?
If it's, if it's, if the chief will, if that becomes to be an issue, the chief will come back to this board and ask for more resources.
So is this decision based on a conclusion that there would be no additional police resources needed to support these businesses?
No.
It is not based on that conclusion. So additional police resources may be needed. May not, don't know.
We don't know.
The police chief, White, have you looked into that issue and made a conclusion?
I am not, I, I would have to come back to the board. The only thing I can say I looked into is I polled communities that have medical marijuana, cause that's all that's available right now, and those communities were Addison, Arlington Heights, Deerfield, Elmwood Park, Highland Park, Justice, Mount Prospect, Naperville, North Aurora, Oak Park, and Romeo Ville. And I asked the chiefs to send me information on calls for service or increased criminal activity. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them have had no calls for service at all. Those communities were Romeo Ville, Oak Park, Mount Prospect, and we're talking criminal activity. Justice, Elmwood Park, and Addison. They have had calls for service for burglar alarms, parking complaints. And so out of all those communities, none of them has seen an uptick in crime according to their chiefs. And the ones that I personally visited, just to see how their, their cannabis stores were set up, have walked me through their procedure for accepting the deliveries and how they secure their property. So I didn't, I can't go to a dispensary because there's not one open in Illinois, so I couldn't, if I had, if there were more police resources needed, I would come back to the board and say, this is what we're seeing. But based on medical cannabis, which is available, none of these communities had to hire additional police officers, have seen an uptick in crime, or had an increase in calls for service besides burglar alarms.
So the motion before us is to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to adult use and medical cannabis business establishments. Please call the roll.
It is with the, with adding the 500 feet.
The 500 feet for medical.
That was the only change, I think.
Yes.
And so, Trustee Hannan, you modifying your original motion to include that change?
Yes.
Okay, and then, Trustee Galgos?
I do second.
I second.
Okay, so we're.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Peters?
No.
Trustee Galgos?
Aye.
Trustee Jiza?
No.
Trustee Hannan?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a discussion of the.
I want to just make sure I understand some things. First of all, comparing the primary with medical marijuana and recreation with marijuana. I, I know what it takes as a counselor to get a prescription for medical marijuana, to get a screen to the state, but if, if there's a general appearance of, of, of primary, say, you know, in one place, it's, it's, it's recreation. But what I wanted to ask about is, it sounds like you're evaluating traffic. Now, I, I live right here in the corner of Long County itself. And on any given day, I can clearly make a left turn onto Harvard Avenue with Costco in that direction. It used to be between 4th and 6th. Now it's between, anytime, on a Sunday, on a, a weekday, I sometimes have to fall down to 26th Street. I don't, I don't know if you're planning widely Harlem in that area, but I can imagine a little bit, if you'd like. I can sit in front of my house, on any given day, and watch 15 to 20 people run through the stop sign. It gets crossed, gets blocked, parked.
What is your question, sir?
My question is, is, is this gonna be dealt with in terms of the traffic situation where it is? Because between the trains and all the other businesses, Cross and Jewel and everything, if that gets congested, or what is, what is the solution?
The Village will address parking and traffic considerations, once we have an idea of what's actually gonna happen. So we're gonna move on now to the discussion of the library referendum request. You're still with us? Are you still up for doing this?
Let's do it. I'm not offended if people wanna leave.
Can I?
Cleared the room. I was waiting for this to show up. I think I was pressing this while we were waiting.
Do we need to dim some lights?
We might need to dim the lights a little. Hi. I'm Courtney Greepack. I'm the secretary for the Riverside Library Board. We have other members of the Riverside Library Board with us tonight, Joan, our president, we have Michael, Ken, Mike, Janice, our lovely director, who we all know and love, and also Nora and Diane. We're very lucky to have a great staff at the library. I know I don't need to preach that to this audience. We have a, a good presentation that we are hoping would be a good education for the community. But I'm going to go through it very quickly this evening, considering the late hour. I hope people will take a chance to read it and understand a little bit about the library, the changing needs, and the long process that have, that has gotten us to this point. I don't think it will come as a surprise to anyone that our library is really a community hub. It is landmark number one, and it is the unofficial youth center for Riverside. And the last time we had any kind of significant addition to the building was 1985, when we more than doubled the size of the facility. That addition was funded by a $1.5 million referendum. Since then, we've done a lot of projects, the quiet reading room, new adult book shelving, the opening doors project that really helped to expand access to the elevator, so everyone could use both floors of the library. All of this was focused on the adult patrons of the library. We also have done a lot of maintenance, including our HVAC. People saw the big cranes out in front of the library. That was financed through our savings and through a loan with the Village that will be paid off in about two years. So we've been good fiscal stewards. I'm newer to the board, but the board has done a great job of really planning and having a rainy day fund. We've spent about a half a million dollars on all the various upkeep, maintenance, roof, plumbing, everything that needs to be done for that historic building and keeping it the gem that it really is. So here's how we've changed. Our community has changed. We now have up to 1,000 students every month coming to us after school. Like I said, we are the unofficial youth center. Our attendance at programs has more than doubled in the last decade. That's for both children's and adult programs. And meanwhile, we still have, even in the summer months, you know, 100 to 250 patrons per day using the library as an excellent activity and way to get out of the heat and really just use their time. So the needs, we've talked about this a little bit before, I really am gonna go quickly, I feel bad about the hour, but we have the big open space with the staircase, all the kids are downstairs, that means all the noise travels upstairs. And we have downstairs the young children mingling with the teenagers with no defined spaces whatsoever. That's one of the main things that we want to address with our renovation, the noise and really getting defined spaces. Shelving, wear and tear, obviously dated carpet, energy efficient lighting would be a big plus.
Courtney, Courtney, you don't need to rush through this.
I know, it's okay, I feel bad.
Take your time.
But, no, it's all right.
This is important, so take your time.
It is.
And let us know what you.
I think some of you are probably aware of most of this anyway. You've probably come to the library or you've come to our events. You've seen the condition of things, the condition of the furniture, the lack of storage. We don't really have the space needs to suit what we're providing to the community in terms of programs and services. We also have a public meeting space that gets used very regularly, it's booked often. And unfortunately, it could use an upgrade as well. We did offer naming rights for that and other spaces within the library, still available, if anybody's interested. But so far, no takers. And our lack of a functional kitchen really limits our opportunity, opportunities for having programming that includes foods, food, but also having events that include food. So if we wanted to have more weddings, or showers, or other rental events, we're really limited in that because we have to do all the food prep somewhere else. So this is our vision. It really shifts around the space of the library. What remains in place, the public meeting room gets an expansion, and then it, there would be a divider down the middle, so we could actually have two spaces when needed with separate entrances. Oh my, throwing pace. Come on, there we go. We needed some comic relief anyway. So genealogy stays in place. But what we're working on first is a new early learner section. So the early learners, we're starting construction very soon, it should be finished by January. This is gonna be a great new space. Right now, our early learners are where the juvenile and middle school section is at the other end. And it's a big open space, there, the storytime room is where the staff meeting room will be. And now we're gonna move the storytime room into a really great space with glass walls. And the early learner space will finally get to have a view of the river. So that was one of our main goals. Let's get the kids facing the river, taking advantage of the great view. And then we would reorganize and have our teens and juveniles up in the far end, the north end. I think that's north, I always get turned around Riverside still. But teens and young adults would have their own space. We did get some funding for STEM programming in particular, through the Reef Grant. And that would be focused on our, primarily on our teen room and some technology. And really reorganizing, you'll see in the center space how we have long rows of tables and, and gathering spaces for the kids who are doing their homework. Right now, they kinda gather willy-nilly all over the place, and this will really make better use of our space for what we're using it for. So this gets into a little bit more detail about each of the ones that I described. The multipurpose storytime room, soundproofing, better age-appropriate decor, storage. The enclosed teen space, really giving them their own defined space will hopefully, you know, make them feel like it's their library too and take ownership for their space. We think that's important. And also having appropriate age, age-appropriate seating for them to gather and do projects together. Our public meeting room, this is what I was saying, it would have a division in it with two separate entrances, so that it would be, you know, we could, sometimes we have more demand than we can meet. And all the new fixtures, carpet, furniture, energy efficient lighting, really having mobile desks for our, our librarians so that they can move around where they're needed most. I think that's came from them, something that they want. And then, of course, having the updated shelving, which would be the right height and function for the audience. That's not something we currently have. So here's our timeline. 2013 is when we got going with the Studio GC to evaluate the space, figure out our needs, and come to a conclusion as a board, this is before my time, but to come to a conclusion as a board of what was needed. The space plan was approved in 2016, and some of the projects started right away. The new shelving, the opening doors, the HVAC, a lot of that was completed, all of it was completed without any additional tax levy. But it was also completed with the help of the Friends of the Library and through fundraisers and through the Village's help by issuing the loan to us to do the HVAC replacement. Meanwhile, we started our lower level fundraising, and we're gonna give you some more details in a second. We've been in that process now for about three years, and it has led us to the point where we can do the early learners' construction at a cost of $160,000 with the funds that we've raised. So we're pretty proud of that, even though we hoped to have raised more by this point, but at least we're able to start the first phase, and our students, our children will get the immediate impact. So when we first learned, or when we first approved the space plan in 2016, the estimated cost was 1.3 million. A few years have gone by, costs have gone up, that cost has risen now to about 1.5 million. This is all the work that we've done for fundraising. We did a capital campaign mailing to wine tasting fundraisers that are my personal favorite, grants and gifts, the Friends Again Juniors, the Reef Fund, the Reef Grant that we received for $57,000, art sale donations, we've had gift funds and endowments. And altogether, we raised about $217,000. But since $57,000 of that needs to go toward our teen technology space, we have about $167,000 to put toward the early learners' first project. The sad news is that at this rate, it would take us 15 to 20 years to raise the money to do this project. And that's the point that we wanna hammer home. We are, never really thought we would come back and ask the voters and ask people to help us get to our goal sooner. We had sincerely hoped that we were gonna raise the money that we needed to. But at this rate, we're just afraid that we're gonna miss a whole generation and not have the space that we need for them to get the most out of their experience. So we are coming to the Village Board to ask you to put a referendum on the ballot for 1.5 million, the language of which we will give you in full detail, but we wanted to just introduce this idea with you tonight. This would take us through the rest of the project, everything we've discussed, and here's kind of the breakdown of the costs. So 1.3 million is, I did it again, the actual construction cost. But then we have some other fees for bond fees, architecture and design, and then we built in some unanticipated costs for any construction overruns. Now, if people still are motivated to, you know, generously donate to this cause between now and the time we would put it to the voters or by the, before we would issue the bonds, we would love to bring that number down. We're still planning on having our reading between the wines event, which each year has raised about $30,000, thanks to a generous matching donation that we've gotten each year. So this is where we're at today, and here's how it breaks down for homeowners. So if we did a 20-year bond, it would be about a $30 increase for a $300,000 home or a $52 annual increase for a $500,000 home. And then you'll see that for a 15-year bond, that goes up just a little bit, by about $6 for a $300,000 home and $10 for a $500,000 home. We feel this is the most equitable way to approach this project, where everyone could put in a little bit of money every year to get it done sooner, primarily for our kids. But also for the community as a whole, for the community meeting room, you know, that people use on a regular basis, for the teens who are coming there after school, because frankly, there isn't another space for them to go to in town. We really wanna make sure that we're doing this in an equitable way, that the young families who are just moving into town are contributing as much as the families who have been here for a long time and might be quicker to pull out their checkbooks, frankly. So, you know, the impact isn't that great. The amount is comparable to the 1985, 84 construction project was a 1.5 million. So we're really not going for the bucket list project. This is not something where we thought, let's do everything under the sun within the library and see what that big dollar amount is. This is a very targeted effort to renovate the lower level and do it in, hopefully, a reasonable way that people will support. This is a very targeted effort to renovate the lower level and do it in, hopefully, a reasonable way that people will support. So here's what the next steps are, we are going to have community meetings as we have done in the past at the library. We encourage people to come out, we'll schedule those soon. Our library board meeting is the second Tuesday of every month. We always welcome the public to come and give us their feedback. As far as this board, the last day for you to adopt a resolution to put an ordinance on the ballot would be December thirtieth, and then the deadline to certify that question to the Cook County Clerk's Office is January ninth. We obviously will put out information to the community, we would come back to you if you have any questions. I'm assuming we probably don't wanna dive in tonight, we'd be happy to come back another night, if that would be easier. And, you know, we wanna answer any questions that the public may have and any questions that you may have. So, I did race through that, I think I'm a little spent by the hour as well, so I apologize for speaking so quickly.
You did great.
Anything? Yep, sure.
But since everyone's just been blurting in on...
Yeah, it's happened.
I really appreciate the sense of how the library has changed in function. I know when my daughter, who's now nine, would come to Storytime, and it was definitely not sort of the big after-school hangout that it is now, and I think anything you could do to communicate that to people, that it has become, you know, the place for sort of seventh and eighth graders to come. I mean, it's, the tables are packed, and for people to need to understand that, I think, in my mind, that's the key that makes this make sense, is, you know, if not here, if we don't give, if we don't separate the ages, where are these kids gonna go, and isn't that what community is all about?
Right.
So that was, I'd like to see that.
Agreed.
And I agree too, you're right, it is the closest thing we have to a youth center right now. And the staff is wonderful with the kids, especially Ms. Silva, very cool, that's why they wanna be there, and Nora, they wanna be there because, you know, staff is cool, it's a comfortable place, they can get their homework done, they can socialize, it's a safe place, and I think that we should support you guys in this endeavor.
So, if I can just, let me, just, I agree with this, obviously, but the technical question for us is not whether we think the referendum is a good idea or not, but whether or not we want, because we are the only people who can put it on the ballot. So the question really for us is whether we want to direct staff to work with the library, to come back with language. Now, there are some impacts on the Village manager, do you wanna?
Sure. So, my first suggestion for the library board is, in the Village Board, would be that our staff would work closely with their staff, because obviously, it would have an impact on the Village because we would be the bond issuer, so we would be doing a lot of the heavy lifting. And so my initial reaction to, as a former finance director, is I would recommend that a fifteen-year debt repayment be, because given that you're looking at doing furniture and things of that sort, the life of the asset, when bonds, when they're looking at issuing debt, they're looking at, "What are you gonna be utilizing it for?" And that can be items that we vet along the way, but as part of the question, when creating the referendum question for residents, they're gonna ask, "What's the duration of the bond?" Also, in speaking with the Village's Finance Director, if the debt is to be issued, if we base it on the March 2020 date, we would need it to be issued, so if the referendum passed and everything was finalized, to move pretty quickly so that it doesn't impact the Village's debt limit. Because if the debt is not issued prior to November first of 2020, then it does impact the Villages. And so that's what I would want our Village Board to be cognizant of, because the one-point-five-million would be approximately six percent of our total legal debt limit.
Is that, have you addressed that in terms of the timeline?
The timeline, yes, and I think, we think we're well within that, that we wouldn't have a problem with that.
That could be issued in that quick, that quick.
That's because of a new, there's a new bill where this bond would not affect our debt limit because of a statute that was passed.
And will there be, will there be actual expenses incurred by the Village in this process?
There will, I'm certain, be staff time. In addition to that, anything that legal counsel would do, I would just ask that they would build the library directly. I know that they're utilizing Kleintorpe and Jane...
I was gonna say, their library attorneys are really tough to deal with.
So, I think that removes a barrier or hurdle, because obviously, we're trying to streamline the process and work with the library closely.
So it can be efficient, because we'll be doing both sides of it. So what we really need is just a consensus saying that we favor putting this on the March ballot, and then they will come back with language in either our next meeting or in October.
Correct, and a draft ordinance, everything will be packaged under their, you know, their expense to get it packaged up. But really, it's just that there's no significant opposition to letting the voters decide.
So, do we have a consensus? Yes? Mr. Jesa?
Sure.
Yes, yes, it's unanimous. Thank you, and I'm sorry you had to sit through hours and hours.
No, I would've probably been here anyway, so, thank you for hearing our presentation tonight and for being so supportive. We wanna give everybody a chance to weigh in on this and see if we can make a better space for our kids.
And, you know, I know that I don't have enough opportunity to thank the library for what you provide to our Village. I know I use it extensively in my own work, and I always see the kids and the adults in there, and you're a jewel and an integral, vital part of our community, so thank you for what you do.
We haven't talked about this, but, you know, Jessica can use NSM, she thinks it's a costly Village time.
Yeah.
She can look that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, a nicer way to end up is...
I have a nicer way to end it, we have no new business, I asked for a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Peters, second by Mr. Gallegos, call the roll.
Trustee Peters?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Trustee Jesa?
Aye.
Trustee Hannan?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Pollack?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you, good night.